Welcome everyone out to our. Happy to be in the nation's meeting, the day of September seventeenth. Looks like the first time on the agenda we get an administrative item. To the preliminary approval of Longhorn Estates. Eighty-four lots across five phases. Looking through it. Anywhere from six thousand to. I guess what's the highlights that changed since we've heard this numerous times?
Well, Felix, yeah, nothing really has changed. Um, I think there's a couple of things I just wanted to point out. In this meeting. I noticed there was a. A mistake on the zoning because the zoning is actually R one fifteen. And if we're using the connectivity incentivized allowances, then they could go as low as six thousand. Square feet, so they're just a minor correction on the report and. But everything else looks really, really similar to what you saw during the work session and also the rezone. There's also one more thing to note. Um, so if you take a look at exhibit A is the concept, they're basically the subdivision plan. This, this very will closely, very closely reflect what. Will ultimately be done in line with. The very last page of this report where you can see they have a parks plan.
That's the big ones in the work session in last time, right?
Yeah. So I would, I would fully anticipate that there's going to be some, you know, very minor changes. The road system will stay the same, but I think. Perdominant with some changes in that open space area, just on the south end of that open space. And then uh, with the addition of uh, and it one more six pack. Which would bring your total lots up to ninety lots. They'd still be within that threshold because they. Just looking at the R one fifteen zoning with that acreage, they could go up to one hundred and sixteen. And so uh, that's, I think those are, those are primarily what I wanted to point it out.
Well, thanks for making the changes on the uh. On the recommendations too.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Heyers. If you guys are good with that, I kind of want to. It all ties together with my business. So we're good, let's just have a conversation, tighten both together, you are out of that. And the next item we're going to is legislative, it's going to be on that result of the MIBUS property, which is right next to it, which ties. Was the finally seen before, like our last question with Longhorn, MIBUS is the big part and all that stuff in it. But. I guess this is maybe more a question for Liam. In the development agreement in the rezone for Longhorn, there were stipulations that he had due to get the Carol up to speed. Right? Is there a way we can put them same stipulations on the rezone on my business?
Oh, well, yeah.
Because my concern and. With this is, you know. We, we met with them people from the Carol several times, we heard the concerns, we've worked really hard to get that, put into that agreement. Try and fix it. Well, now he's got this big development over here too, which is. Theoretically closer to the infrastructure where he's headed down related to sewer and stuff. I don't want to see him come in and do another huge two hundred acre and the Carol still gets screwed over here. But nothing's getting fixed.
Think you're not going to fulfill his obligations under the other development agreements?
Well, I think he will eventually, but he's going to work on these two hundred block over here on my business first and work his way. The Longhorn and then while the Carol's still sitting there. Not getting fixed year after year after year and, and in the latest version, just to go on what Ren was saying to back up just for a second. On the administrative item for Longhorn. Um Felix added the end. What we've already got in the agreement. For that subdivision. About uh, making sure that, that the Carol gets made whole, so to speak. I also agree with what friends saying about pushing that forward to the next one now. Someone at the table with smarter than me said, well, consider this. And I'll consider it to the point of. Being fair, but, but not being forgiven. And that is, well, maybe he needs to make the money on this other subdivision to finish the car. Now, okay, that's fair, that's a fair statement. But does that get the Carl hold anytime soon within the next? Five years. And unfortunately, because of the length of time that it's going to take to start developing MIBUS property, you're probably looking at at least. One to two years to even get the sewer even close by. So I would prefer to err. On the side of those people that have been putting up with a lot of crap there for a long time.
But Brandon, would you say? Fix the Carol before? He can do anything with this reason?
I'm fine with approving the reason, but as a condition, just like we did with Longhorn, I want them same stipulations with Tim Longhorn tied to this MIBUS reason. So he's got to come in and make that fix what's screwed up. Before he can start others.
Yeah, we could do in the development agreement and say that the rezone is not, uh, will not go into effect until certain things in the other agreement are satisfied. So that pushes it one step further, he can't submit for a subdivision, he can't. Move forward any further because he doesn't have a new zone. So you're still resting all of the requirements of fixing Pecaro on Longhorn, but you're saying. This whole thing doesn't even change, so start fixing Long or start planting Longhorn so you can sell those lots, so you can make some money, so you can fix that problem. Uh, but it holds this whole, what eight, how many lots?
Eighty-four on the Carol, maybe more and there's, I can't remember, almost two hundred on my business.
Yeah, so holds the two hundred kind of over his head for fixing the original problem.
Then I don't, I, I mean, if it's a financial thing, I'm fine with, you know, I'd hate to see him hang up. If he's got money banking on getting this property done and moving forward on the rezone. I don't really want to see that him lose funding source because then we're never getting.
That's what I was going to say, I'm worried about not doing the rezone, like I, I'd like the contingency and I think if we grant the rezone, that'll help them with financing.
I do too.
Yeah, I'm afraid that not grant the rezone might.
Well, I'm hoping Longhorn. Gave him the financing that he needed to fix. The car, but you wouldn't thought. Right? But yeah, that's, that's a good concern, that valid concern if uh, if it didn't give him money. Mr. Burns hasn't owned Longhorn anymore either.
Oh, really?
Well, he didn't at the end when he was running through the process, uh, so it was in. Uh, in his name, but I believe his funders took it back and then hired him to finish the entire process.
So. See, how does that fix the Carol problem then?
It puts the responsibility on the owner of the property in order to develop to fix the Carol.
But see, we shouldn't have to figure out what motivation is, but it seems like that's what we end up having to do is anticipate what the motivation is.
Yeah.
And. That's not what we're here for, but, but then we got people that are getting treated. Worse than poorly here and not getting any resolve. So. I mean, all in all. I like, I, I, I really liked that plan that Andrew's got pulled up there that he shared with us last time. I think it's neat for the area. I mean, the growth is coming, I don't. I think there's challenges with the development side of it, but that's not our problem. But at the end of the day, I really feel for those folks in the Carol. That. They, they kind of got shafted for a lot of years and. Given that it's the same. Developer on the paper, on the application. I, I want to see it tied all. Through it all, so that we try and get a. A solution and maybe the more lots that it's tied to. Gives them that much more motivation.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, we can do that legislative.
But that might feel now. No matter, I don't see any concerns with it. You got anything else on him for us Felix?
Um, no. Um, with the MIBUS rezone proposal. Nothing really.
Felix, sorry, back on um, yeah, Longhorn, would you be okay in planning commissioners telling what you think? Uh, condition number two developer will provide written verification from LMSA for the ownership synchronized before final subdivision approval. Would you be okay if we change that to? Prior to the final subdivision application? So we don't get him through the final process? And then I'll have it, not have it. Um, the. Uh, Central Weaver, uh, it's this budget, this land and a few other properties out here were on the agenda yesterday for annexation into Central Weaver. However, when Central Weaver has those annexation agreements, the annexation agreements. Requires the landowner to agree that the camp will maintain those lines. And when I heard that, I was like, oh. Uh huh, that works, but how are we as third party to this agreement? Yeah, so. And I do know that our comptroller as well as our engineering division would very much like to get out from under good uh, utility business and so. That's something for Pat to figure out and work with. I did talk to the manager at LMSA early today. And she said, I'm not going to tell him that he had, that will take his lines, not until we back through that whole sewer study. So if. It's maybe postponed for a little bit and it may be nice to not get him through final.
See, so that's another reason if we don't tie something to this project, Carl still goes bang.
So what, where was it that you wanted to change that number list?
It's a number two, condition number two.
Oh, on.
On the, on the.
On long.
Longhorn, which.
The first, the first.
You don't have in this package. It's, it should be in that new, that thick one that gave you Sarah, yeah.
So it'd just be before subdivision application?
Prior to final subdivision application instead of final subdivision approvals. Change the word for the application. Are you okay with that?
Definitely, I think that would be going.
Hopefully you can resolve all that.
So before.
Just be on the end of number two, it'd just be before subdivision application instead of.
Oh, before final subdivision and application. Final application or the subdivision application?
Final, this is preliminary.
For final.
Basically, if you say that when he submits to final, if he doesn't pass something from LMSA or some other. Then, then he doesn't have a complete application, so he's not entitled for review.
Something on, and I think this one is, I'm getting these two confused, but I'm pretty sure I'm looking at, um, how do you say it?
My best.
My best, thank you, I'm like. Okay. Um, so on either of these, we talked about having some sort of expiration on the zoning, is that? Like if this particular plan doesn't go through, then the zoning doesn't go through?
Um, so the development agreements that we've been using say that you've got a, the development agreement has a term of X number of years, I think it's been ten years typically.
And it's tied to.
After ten years, yeah.
For these owners and everyone, they can't sell it. They can be.
They could, they could settle it.
But it has to be defined.
But yeah, so. Yep, so the development agreement will run with property, anyone who picks it up is now quote the developer.
And that's just part of your standard development agreement. And it says here, um, just that they can do the mutually agreed on park amenity. Thing and is that because they're putting in the park on this one and so we can't do the exact seventy-five hundred, that's all they worked out in the development agreement, is that correct?
It hasn't been worked out yet, but the proposal is that they'll, they'll fill the park basically.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about the exact number, this is one that is being negotiated to the development agreement.
Wouldn't possibly.
I just get nervous.
You know what, we can do both, we could say seventy-five hundred dollars or as many otherwise be negotiated.
I'll put that. Okay, so it's a plan to. Feed it to the park district and clean park amenities. Is. Um, instead of mutually agreed upon. We'll just say. Is valued at seventy-five hundred dollars per lot or equivalent.
Or yeah, as otherwise negotiated by the park district.
Now, as this goes through the process. Do we want them to show? Lot boundaries? I usually encourage them to take them off. And just default to the R one fifteen zone. But. For whatever reason, they kept them on, so if they push it through like this, then pretty much we could make them build this, right? Their big kids are over twenty-two. Okay, anything else on? Either Longhorn or MIBUS? Okay, Charlie. This will be. I'm assuming both of these are public hearings, right?
Yes, MIBUS and the Texas.
You're going to screw me up when I go to read that first one, it doesn't say. No. The only two that are public hearing are the.
Well, item one point one.
It doesn't say it's a public hearing, yeah, one point, oh, I'm sorry, I see what you're saying. It's under legislative, I know, but it just screws me up because I get reading from a paper, all right, so slap me if I screw it up, I'll, I'll kick you, I'll kick you.
So one is just administrative and one point one, it's the one that.
It'll be a public hearing. And one point two.
Yeah, we should, we should try to be more consistent, we'll do that. Sorry, just clicking down to. So. On this one. I just took our conversation from your work session and plugged in the information, there's also one or two pieces that's new, sorry, the packet's big. There we go. Um, so I highlighted the uh, stuff that is new so that you can see it real quick and real easy. Uh, but if you go to page. Starting with.
We're going to go from the back like we did the other man.
Go backwards. You know, sometimes it's fun to mix it up. All right, let's see, boy, first little bit of highlighting. Starts on page ten. Yeah, that's right, and this is actually a little bit different than what we had discussed. Uh, we did discuss uh, design standards for multifamily dwelling units. But we didn't go into any kind of detail, so what I did is I went into the form based code and I copy and pasted some of the most simple. Uh, design standards that they have, uh, roof lines, break those up every uh, fifty feet with no less than a twelve inch shift in. Um, adjacent planes, um, building massing, break your building facades up every thirty feet, uh, no less than a six inch shift. Um, and then building materials, uh, each facade shall consist of brick, stone or wood or foam material that. Such as fiber cement, that is hard for the land authority to discuss, distinguish from real bricks, stone or wood. Metal can be used as an accent, but not as a primary. Uh, colors, at least two muted earth tone colors generally visible from the site. And then uh, repetitious building facade, so this is one that's a unique, uh, you guys tell me if you feel like I, I hit the nail on the head on this one. When multiple dwelling units with substantially similar floor plans will be located on the same street block, whether mirrored or not. No less than seven unique dwelling unit facade patterns that use. Unique architectural design standards and materials shall be used and distributed. In a manner that avoids the obvious repetition of the same pattern and that number seven can be whatever number you guys want it to be. So whether mirrored or not, uh, within visual, visual proximity of another. This provision shall not apply to a stacked multifamily dwelling or to any dwelling unit within a building that has one common street facing front entrance. And a street facing facade that gives the visual appearance of a single family dwelling. Does understand where we're going with that, so if you've got your townhomes all stacked or attached, not stacked, attached side by side. Each unit needs to have its own architectural flavor. Um, so you're not just getting the same lick and stick everywhere now, it is a little bit extreme to say every single unit has to have its own flavor, we could say every building has to have its own flavor, just. Take a little bit more writing to do that, um, I kind of like the idea of each unit having its own flavor anyway. Unless it's all inside of one building where the front of the building looks like a single family dwelling. Um, some of the buildings at uh, Norton Commons, some of the buildings down at the projects that we were looking at, um, down in Utah Valley. Um, and when daybreak. And you, see, some of them even have a couple of front doors, uh, but you wouldn't be able to tell that they're not single family dwellings, they just look so little custom built, basically. This tries to get you to a custom build standard. There's a project down in Davis County that uh, uh, we went and visited uh, two or three weeks ago and. I thought they were all custom homes and then we drove around the corner. And it was the same buildings, it's that, oh, they're not custom homes, but you wouldn't be able to tell unless you're looking really closely.
This might be one we do a field trip to.
Okay, you guys okay with that? Temporary building are used, we just added that in because it's in the other chapters. Okay. Now yada yada over the best part. And go to page fifteen. So uh, the discussion about site setbacks, five feet, seven feet, ten feet, um, here's what I did. Five feet per single story, seven feet for more than one story. And then there's a note for more than one story, scrolled out of the next page. More than one story is when any part of a second story exists behind the facade wall that faces the side yard. Excluding area within a basement. For example, if the second story is under a gable roof. And the gable faces the subject side yard, then that side of the building is more than one story. But if the gable faces the rear yard or the front yard and all of the second story on the facade that faces the subject side yard is above the roof's eve, then that side of the building is one story. Does that work for you guys? So.
So the second story fits in between here and get rafters essentially, it's long.
That's right, so yeah, so you got your gable facing you at the street and you're looking at the side. Uh, your, that your eve is going to be here from your ground to your eve will be about one story. But if you show any other parts of that second story behind that eve, then that's more than, more than one story. So that way, if you turn the, turn the facade this way. That's going to definitely be two stories because that's your attic space, trying to figure out how to include attic space without including attic space if it's oriented the right way and.
Yeah, that's true, doesn't. So it's. Five feet, so we'll have ten feet to walk.
Between buildings.
New buildings, which is not.
Ten feet.
For a fence and then be able to walk on either side or get a. Yes.
Yeah, or seven if it's two stories. So, could be twelve feet.
Yeah.
Got to have enough of an angle so that it doesn't fall over. Although you could hop between the two walls if you're close enough, maybe that works.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Building widths, uh, I did have a note uh, on. This, having the columns on what we're looking at in your last meeting regarding building widths, this is just putting it into the text, so maximum width of the building on page eighteen. The maximum width of the main building other than a dwelling shall be the lesser of. Um, you've got two hundred and forty feet, but oh, sorry, I didn't highlight the. Yeah, so ten in the special regulations, but if you look up uh, main dwelling width, sorry, uh, under the R three zone, that should be highlighted, so. Eight attached units or two hundred and forty feet, so that'd be whichever is the lesser of that. And then minimum distance between buildings on the same lot shall be ten, yeah, I think it previously said six. I think if I remember right, that is it, so let's shoot, one more. Down on page twenty-six. A private street that complies with this subsection A shall be allowed to count as a public street for the purposes of creating a street block pursuant to section one oh six two dash three. Which is our street block section or other street block regulations of those nineties code, we just want to make it clear. If it's private street, but it's open for public thoroughfare. It's fine, that's still part of the, the street blocker.
And that was to make the block smaller.
Yes. Hey, how you doing? I don't have a big presentation for you, so I just get up and after you have questions.
She got time to take a diet.
So.
Okay, well, turn to our work, turn to our meeting, we coming back here for work, center?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone out to the Western Weaver Planning Commission meeting, tonight is. Uh, Tuesday night, September seventeenth. Go ahead and start off with a pledge of allegiance, if y'all wouldn't mind staying and repeat the pledge with me. Thank you for that, we'll go ahead and let the record indicate that all planning commission members are here and in attendance and we appreciate them for being here and. Their service, um. First item on our agenda is going to be an administrative item, this is LVL zero five three zero two four. A request for preliminary subdivision approval of the Longhorn Estate subdivision. Residential development consisting of eighty-four lots across the five phases, Director Grover?
Thank you Chair, this is administrative item, as you mentioned, you'll just be looking at code, making sure it's complying with code and if it is, then you have to approve it. Um, no public comment is taken on this and Mr. Yavarino will be presenting.
Thank you. Yes, good evening commissioners. What we have before you is a request for preliminary approval at, at the subdivision level. And so with the, with this particular application, we. We um, we have a. A subdivision plan that we can look over through my, through this presentation. We're also going to look over some of the things that pertain to this general area that were required through the development agreement. And also, um. Things that are required by the zoning, in this case, the zoning we're dealing with here is the R one fifteen zone. And this property was recently rezoned to that R one fifteen, it's a residential uh, development uh. Uh, zoning district. And so. Going on to this slide here, so. Just to kind of get our, our bearings here, this is in the Western Weaver area about sixty-seven hundred west. It's between sixty-seven and seventy-five hundred west those streets. And you can see it's just north of, it's a development called the uh, Vicaro Village subdivision. And this, what this proposal would do is create a residential development on that area in, highlighted in red. And with, with this development, they've. This development proposal, they've submitted letter, letters from the. The culinary water provider. The uh, West Warren Water. At the secondary water provider. Um, would be a private system, it, it is a private system at the time, but a. An op, an operating agency to take over that system would be Mountain Views Water LLC. And. Then. The uh, the sewer service provider, the, the Central Weaver Sewer District. And in coordination with the Little Mountain Sewer District. And so here we have the, the subdivision plan. This is a. This is preliminary. Drawing of the, of the plan. The, what, what will finally be recorded will look very similar to this as far as the road alignments and the pathway alignments as well as the. The open space area, the reason that open space area is located in that, that by that space is because. It's, is designated area for a. The irrigation holding pond. And that, that irrigation holding pond will serve. The, the secondary water needs for this um. For this area. Longhorn. The Carol Village and the MIBUS after. Improvements are made to that system because right now it's not a functioning system. And so that's part of the reason why we have, when we took this development through for a, a, a rezone, we have a development agreement. And we wanted to ensure that. There's some things that are very unique about this property that are taken care of. Through the development agreement because oftentimes the zoning. And just our general subdivision review at the county doesn't cover all of those, those, those special circumstances, so. We do fall back pretty heavily on. Standards from that development agreement. During this, during subdivision review. And going on to. So. Maybe just a little more detail about this, this proposal, so. Um, this, this piece of land. Is. Let's see here. The acreage. Forty acres. With the potential of a hundred and sixteen lots. And so. This proposal that we were looking at right here is indicating eighty-four lots. And. So I think that we could reasonably anticipate there, there would be some fluctuation in the number of lots. But they would not be able to exceed that one. But they would not be able to exceed that one hundred and sixteen. Um lot. There is also some area and with requirements that come into play with the R one fifteen zone. As far as the six thousand square feet area and sixty feet wide for each lot. And uh. With with this preliminary subdivision uh proposal, they've also included. Some civil drawings. And. We're we're still at the preliminary phases of reviewing these civil drawings, but we do have those and we're we're beginning to. Prepare for um. For. Final reviews. And here here included with the subdivision. Preliminary subdivision plan are the uh cross uh cross sections. For the trail easements. Throughout. As well as each type of street that we're dealing with. We do have um in this detail, we have ten foot sidewalk on one side. Of the street, and we also have. Um sixty-six foot right away. Where these where these planned streets. And you can see there's another detail for. These what are called six packs where you have. Basically, six lots accessing from a. A a private road. And so. We've we've got details for those as well. And here is a. Uh just kind of a regional plan that would. That would um. It it shows how Mibus. Land and the Longhorn land. Are are coming together to create. A. A community park. And community parks are typically you see anywhere from. Ten to twenty acres, and this falls right in that that region about fourteen to fifteen acre park. And. This this park would be owned and operated by. The West Warren Parks District. And so that would be part of the developer's contribution as to the community. Um aspect. Um and there's many different elements involved with this Longhorn. You've got a walking path around the. The 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 water storage pond. Uh multiple access points. For for pedestrian activity throughout the area. As well as some sport courts. And. And it's street trees and those. A lot of these these details are part of the development agreement. And. See here, I'll move on to the. The staff's recommendation. So. With this request for preliminary subdivision approval. Staff gives a positive recommendation for approval. With those conditions. Uh listed here on this on this slide. As well as the. The findings stated in your staff report. And that concludes what I'd like to say about this particular. Uh proposal. Any questions for me?
Felix, I've got one. Um. I know that we need a. Final letter from L M S A that they're gonna own the sewer lines. But along with that as well as I was reviewing. The. Letter from Central Weaver. Um. Exhibit D in our packets. That condition number four. I think we also need to add a condition on this approval. That they get a. Letter from the Promontory Commerce Center P I D. Saying that they have available capacity. In that future lift station, they're gonna be building in that area as well. Um. Based on what's put in. From the Central Weber. Letter. As well.
Great. I'll I'll make sure that's added to the. Conditions.
Now. Another question I got. So Director Grover, help me with this because I know our process has changed as of recently due to some legislation. To where final approval. Is handled at a at a staff level. So when we generally go through and look at these, you know, we're looking to make sure it fits the. Code. That whole process, but as we look at a, you know, in. My view of this, we're looking at lot layouts, we're looking at how that. Looks. If lot layouts were to change and we're gonna see more than what's being proposed. That we're seeing in our packets tonight, does that come back to us?
Yeah, if it's considered a substantial change, it would come back to you. If it's considered a minor change, it would just continue on through the process. Um usually to kind of give you an idea what a substantial change would be is if we're adding more lots. Or adjusting a line or something like that, that's considered more of a minor change.
So if if it did grow from that eighty-six, we would see it again.
Yeah.
Okay. That addresses my concern. Okay, anything for staff? Anything from for the applicant?
Want to say anything, Mr. Burns?
Okay. With that then. I am. Any discussion, I guess I should. Say.
I I know there was the comment that during pre-meeting that we wanted to change on the staff recommendations. So that ownership of the sewer lines. Um. Uh written verification is given before final subdivision application rather than approval. And then also what you stated as condition number eight.
I think we just added into that condition number two, we're making a change, so it would that we just need written verification from L M S A. And from the Promontory. Commerce Center P I D.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I've made a note of that.
You've got it. Awesome.
Okay, with that, then I'm. Ready for a motion if you guys are.
Chair, I'll make a motion for approval of uh approval of. A positive recommended a recommendation to the uh Weaver County Commission. For item number L V L zero five three zero two four. Um Longhorn Estate subdivision. Development. Um per staff recommendations uh uh one, requirements. From the water and sewer districts are satisfied. Two, the developer will provide written verification from L M S A. For the ownership of the sewer lines before final subdivision. Also, approval will be uh provided. From Promontory Commerce P I D uh for capacity. Um before final subdivision application. Three, the HOA is created to maintain and manage the pathways and open spaces and to enforce uh waterwise landscaping. Four, standards for the development agreement are satisfied. Five, the developer agrees to replat the Vicaro Village subdivision before the first phase of Longhorn is recorded. Six, subdivision improvements within Vicaro Village subdivision are complete or escrowed for before the Longhorn Estate subdivision plat is recorded. Uh seven, voluntary contributions are made to the Park District before the final plat uh recordation. And this uh is also based on the following findings. One, the proposed subdivision complies with the Western. Excuse me, West Central Weaver General Plan. And two, the proposed subdivision complies with the applicable county codes.
Hey, I've got a motion. Do I got a second on that motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hey, Commissioner McCormick. Commissioner Andrea Di.
Hi.
Commissioner Faverro.
Hi.
Commissioner Wickern.
Hi.
Commissioner Neville. Commissioner Clontz.
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well. That passes. Okay, now we're gonna move on to our legislative items. We'll start off with item one point one Z M A two zero two four. This is a. This will be a public hearing and possible action. On an application to rezone approximately sixty-five acres of land generally known as the Mibus Family LLC land. Located approximately six thirty-nine south, sixty-seven hundred west from the A two zone to the R one fifteen zone. Director Grover?
On this item, public comment is very important um because we're creating a law. So on this one, you'll need to make sure you open and close the public hearing, and Mr. Yavarena will be presenting.
Thank you, Chair. Yes. Thank you, commissioners. Um so. This is a um a request to amend the zoning map or really just change the zoning for this area. Currently, it's it's zoned A two and which which lines up really well with with. With the existing uses. So the. You can see a lot of the area is currently being farmed. Uh perfectly in line with A two. And you have some large lots and residential uses as well mixed in. The proposal to before you today would be to. Change this zoning to that R one fifteen, that residential. R one fifteen, uh you're basically your fifteen thousand square foot density. Which is. Um. Quite a quite a bit different, but it does line up with what is across. To the west. Um. There are a few things that. That come into play when looking over. A proposal to change the zoning. The. Um the fact that we are ha- here having a public hearing to discuss this topic. And the planning commission does have a wide wide discretion on to on on how they would like to see this. This proposal, um maybe some added. Uh conditions to this proposal. The a wide a wide range of discretion in in this in this in this type of action. And the planning commission would be making a recommendation. To the county commission. For. To uh whether it be to approve. Or to deny. This. Request to change the zoning out here. And this this acreage here that we're dealing with is. Sixty-five acres of land. And you can see that main access would be. Onto seven uh sixty-seven hundred west. And there would be an access through. Longhorn Estates. Down connecting to seventy-one hundred west. Those are both public streets that are. They're dedicated and improved. And. Here's an area map. That I that I thought would be helpful also to do to expound on some some details related to the. Uh to the acreage. And the the proposal. Uh would also include additional park space. So similar to what was next door to the west. Um. There would be rough approximately seven. Seven and a half acres. Preserve for. The the West Warren Parks District. And. You also have uh some things to consider with this particular one where. Um. When. When Longhorn Estates came in, they included with their plan. A traffic impact study. And that that was actually helpful to see. What these roads are capable of, what what can they? Are they capable of serving? The needs for. Not only the additional houses, all the residents that are gonna be. Uh built here. But also visitors that are coming into this area to. Um. To visit the park. And so. There were a couple of um. Couple of intersections. That are. Uh highlighted with these gold golden stars and. Those are the areas where. The the traffic impact study identified. As. As areas where. The traffic would um. Would converge onto nine hundred South Street. So the traffic impact study does make some recommendations on to what type of improvements. For instance, they they uh they recommend a the the traffic impact study recommends a. Um. Uh what do you call it? Um. Additional improvements on nine hundred south and seventy-one hundred west. And that they also, the the traffic impact study also finds that. The the level of service is considered. And is rated a a grade B. Which that's good. Um and so. Let's see here, going on to. The next slide. Uh here is their concept plan. And so. Uh with with in coordination with the planning office, we we've made some recommendations for this developer and. For their design team to um. Make some some changes and some. Some alterations to facilitate. Ease of transportation throughout the the development. So you could see this um this road, Street C. Um has has some curves that would allow for. For easy circulation straight through, you know, east-west, east-west direction. And then you have Street F. Which is a straight road uh north-south. You also have several road stubs. Leading to adjacent properties. And that will actually help to. Uh for neighboring development to connect in with. This development when that time. When that time comes. And so. Here we also can see that there are there that same six pack design. That is being utilized. And. This particular plan. I looked it over. I made account of the the total number of lots. And. Without focusing too heavily on. The total number of lots at this stage of rezone. I just wanted to make it clear that. They would still be held to that. Maximum R one fifteen density, and we would we would verify that. To make sure that they're they're not exceeding the. The allowable number of lots. For this um for this acreage and for the R one fifteen zone. And. Let's see here, th- those those darked, those dark dashed lines, those indicate. Your ten-foot street adjacent pathways. And you can see that the what looks like an alleyway going about roughly in the mid-block. Um. On going in the north-south and east-west. Um that would be a those would be a a private alley. And the rest of the roads throughout this development would be. Public roads. And you'll notice on this north northwest corner of this property, there's a cul-de-sac. But there's also a pathway leading to that open space. Uh. We felt typically we like to steer away from cul-de-sacs, but we feel like it's appropriate in this circumstance, considering that. Uh just to the west, you have that uh that irrigation holding pond, water holding pond. Um here's a a slide that's helpful to see. This is taken directly from the Western Weaver General Plan. And you can see you you the area in yellow is is designated for medium. To large lot residential. And. That's what the R and R one fifteen zone is is. And so you also have. Um some some symbols on this map to to help show. What is planned through these trail corridors, which is the green and the the green dashed line to through this development. And you also have some um. Collector streets, neighborhood collector streets. On the east edge and the west edge. And that's indicated by a white dashed line. And. Going on to the. Next one. And so moving on to the recommendation for this. This rezone proposal. There is. I'm gonna flip to that page in the report. So after reviewing this proposal, um. The. With the within the uh context of the Western Weaver General Plan. Um staff's. Staff's opinion that this rezone will help advance the vision and goals of the general plan. And staff is recommending approval of this rezone. There um we've we I've included some standards here with with this recommendation. And. There is also. In in the report, there's also mention of a couple of things that I'd like to highlight. With regard to. The energy efficiency. With I I was I was looking for ways to find an affordable means. For. To comply with the smart growth standards in the general plan. And. While still being able to maintain some. Some affordability. Uh and so. You can see in the in the in the report, I've I've included. The possibility of adding some. Additional, maybe some attic insulation. To each of these homes. As well as a uh house wrap. To help to increase the efficiency. And also the. Uh installation of. Smart sprinklers or smart sprinkle controllers. And uh smart thermostat. Most builders are. Can integrate those pretty easily with their. Most builders are can integrate those pretty easily with their home plans. And. There is also something that I'd like to, um, for the planning commission to consider is housing affordability. Uh, I spoke with the developer and they, they would be open to maybe um, setting aside a certain percentage of these lots. Um, that would be, they would work with the housing authority to have these. Um, classified as moderate income or even attainable housing, something of that nature. And so maybe, maybe as a, as a condition, include that as. As a, as an option. Let's see here. I am going to. There is also the requirement that. That, that the developer uh, contribute to the parks district. Uh, that could be a combination of open space. Uh, park space in, uh, park improvements. And may, and also some monetary donations, something that is acceptable to the parks district. And. Let's see here. I think that covers it. Yes, any questions?
Thank you Felix. Any questions for staff? When are we going to a public hearing?
I have a question. How many lots did you come up with uh, for this layout that we're looking at?
For this particular one, they would be capped. I want, let me just, let me just find that in here.
One eighty-eight in the staff report.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Hundred and eighty-eight per the staff report.
Yes, that's right, hundred and eighty-eight.
Did you count how many were on the layout though?
On the layout, it's, um. Let me see here, I wanna say it's like two ten.
It's two, roughly two oh six.
Yeah. Two oh six.
Any other questions for staff? Yes, sir.
How many points of egress?
So there would be two. They would, they would need, they would be required to build street C. That would be a public asphalt, fully paved road. And then they would also use seventy-one hundred west. Um, let me, let me look at my area map here. So yes, you would have one to sixty-seven hundred west and one to seventy-one hundred west.
Alright, anything else? Okay, then I'm ready, if you guys are ready, let's, ready for a motion to open a public hearing on this item. An emotional guy second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any post? Okay, we're now in a public hearing on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please come up, state your name and address for the record and then.
Hi, my name is Paul Sherman. My address is seven oh seven South sixty-seven hundred West. Uh, the back of my property borders on the Mivus Farm. I've lived out here for twenty-five years. I am neighbors and friends with the Mivuses, all but one of them that recently moved in from California. One of the things I don't understand about this development is. Um, you know, every, the current residents, including myself, have a acre or more property and. You know, you do these, uh, I don't know what you wanna call it, uh. The subdivision or whatever they're gonna be. I, I've heard up to the smallest quarter acre lots. That's a lot of people in sixty-five acres. And uh, definitely uh, big change in the community as it is now. And plus, uh, you know, the seventy-one hundred west, that's a dead end street still, I believe. Um, it's a fairly new street. Uh, so having a, an access road there, I, now, I don't know how that's gonna work out. Uh, plus, uh, you know, on sixty-seven hundred, that's, that's gonna really bring up the, the traffic on sixty-seven hundred west. I, I don't know how much my input counts, but you know, I, I, I get, you know, development and stuff and. I'd be more okay with it if they were one acre lots like, uh, like we, we have out there. Just cramming that many uh, houses in this, in the sixty-five acres. I just, uh, I don't understand that, so. But uh, yeah, that's just uh, my opinion, you know, I've been out there for twenty-five years is quiet. Small, quiet, arming community, I've loved it. Um, and uh, that's big change. Big change that I don't like seeing to come. So like I said, if it was acre lots or something like that. It'd be better for me, but. Just my opinion, so I just wanted to stand up here and say something. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this item?
Uh, Bill Davis. Uh, seventy-five ninety-eight West five hundred South. I just got a question, when you're zoning all this to. One fifteen or whatever it is, and I realize the developers can put sewer line in and it's development. But. There's no plans technically. The county don't want a sewer plant. The Little Mountain deal don't have any money to build one. I just wondered when you zone this. What's the sense of zoning up when there's really no plans for? A sewer system or that, because the county don't wanna. And most of the people out in the county don't want their taxes go out to do it, so I'm just. Wondering if we're getting the cart before the horse there.
Any other comments on this item? None, I'm ready for motion to close the public hearing on this item, so move, an emotional guy second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Me opposed, that passes. In regards to. I'll take a stab at Mr. Sherman, a couple of Mr. Sherman's comments. Um, as was stated in our previous item, in regard, the traffic at least. The traffic study that was done as part of the Longhorn subdivision proposal went over. Both of those points of egress, both seventy-one hundred and the sixty-seven hundred one. Staff made mention that there's gonna have to be some upgrades made to those based on the information in that traffic study. Um, and then in regards to the dead end on seventy-one hundred. Um, per the county code and help me if I'm wrong, or Director Grover, but. He'd only be allowed to build thirty lots until he has a secondary egress, so um, he would have to make. That tie into seventy-one hundred somehow, um, with, with only thirty lots until he gets a secondary egress. As per what the county code says right now. Um, in regards to Mr. Davis's. Um, as far as sewer goes, there's a lot of bend back and forth and I agree with infrastructure and sewer in this area. Um. In my opinion, I would like to see a condition on this that. You know, before this goes to county commission, we know which way the sewer is going, um. And I, I would assume, seeing what we've seen with Longhorn, it's gonna be going. To the east, to that promontory commerce center lift station, and I'll go into, to Central Weaver. Based on uh, the, the letter we've gotten our packet for the previous approval we just seen, but. I'd like to see some for sure stuff on this item um, as well, unless it was in there and I missed it, I could have missed it. So. Um. But anybody else got anything? On this?
Um, I'll just make a, a comment to clarify why not one acre lots. Um, the transition of farmland, more residential land, it is painful and it affects the community in, in serious ways. Um, but um, Utah wide and nationwide, we're dealing with, I'm sure. You'd be living under a rock, you haven't heard, we have a housing crisis. And the only way to solve that is to build more houses and um, the infrastructure to build one acre lots. Is very expensive, how much frontage we need, how much road, how much sewer, how much water. And what we found is in building one acre lots, we're, we're building homes for Californians, that's who can afford to come in and buy those one acre lots. We're not building homes for our children and for us to retire in, so our hope. Uh, is that we can develop small affordable lots, but also require developers to put in the infrastructure. That will make these smaller lots nicer for the community. Yeah, I know it wouldn't be exactly the way a life you would like with a farm, but we're hoping. That these smaller lots will be affordable for people's children and that. We're asking developers to put in the infrastructure and to donate the land to put parks in, so this development in the one that we just approved before. Has a very large park that developer will need to put in all of the infrastructure for, as, as I believe the, they've agreed on. To make it a nice and affordable community for our future residents, so. Um, yes, we are losing a part of um, farmland in Weber County and, and that's difficult, but we've just found that it isn't sustainable in. Our society and we're trying to do what's best for the whole community at a large, at, at large, so. I don't know that really helps, but that's the vision that we have.
Director Robert, I've got, I guess another question in regards to this, just because I don't see it in our. Packet information, I apologize, I didn't catch it sooner, but doesn't. County code for rezone state that we should see available or. Uh, and I, I don't know if it's availability or. And it's not will serve yet, but it's just saying that they have enough water from the water district to serve it. The sewer has enough capacity before it comes to a rezone.
You can require those things, but it's more of a letter of acknowledgement.
Yeah, that's.
Is what's required, um, so. Uh, if you want to go above and beyond that, you can, this is a legislative item, so there's. You know, a lot of things you can put on this above and beyond that, but those are the, the bare minimums.
Do we have letters of acknowledgement for this proposal, just because I don't see it in our?
Uh, let's ask Mr. Yavarino.
Yeah. I'm actually looking through. I believe we do, I, my, my memory serves me well. We got letters from Central Weaver for both Mivus and Longhorn.
Like Mr. Davis is coming, we've got a long ways to go to get sewer between for that. Where the future possible someday lift station is gonna get built. Um, with promontory. So I would, you know, I would expect to see something. From Little Mountain as well as I see in the applicant's application. Um, that's in our packet, it states. The culinary water provider will be worn west worn water, but I don't see anything. Just states the culinary water authority is. Born west worn water and sanitary sewer authority of mountain, I just don't see anything from them.
Yes, so I'm looking through the, the file here, the, for Mivus. I did find. A letter dated September fourth. From Central Weaver Sewer District. And it does mean, it says uh, subdivision called Mivus comprising two hundred and five residential lots. Says we offer the following comments regarding Central Weaver providing sanitary sewer. And I believe it's very similar language to what we found in the, in the Longhorn letter from Central Weaver. Um, I can bring it up on the screen if you'd like to take a look at.
Don't, do we have anything from Little Mountain or from uh, more and less worn water? I mean, it states in his application sewers, Little Mountain. Just curious if we have a letter from those. Providers.
So we do have. Okay, so something here from West Warren Water, West Warren, Warren Water Improvement District. Uh, May second, two thousand twenty-four. And it may, it says basically water availability letter for Mivus Farm. Was going to try to make sure that it covered the bases that we're looking for.
And I mean, as long as, it sounds like it's at least an acknowledgement that they've got water.
Okay, yeah.
But nothing from Little Mountain?
Maybe it got missed as an attachment into the report, I apologize about that.
We need something from Little Mountain though, still.
Need some from Little, we don't have sewer, what we have from.
Central Weaver treatment, but just.
Well, we don't have.
We don't have the, gotta get it from point A to point B and Central Weaver don't do that. So that's my first concern. That I don't feel until we have that, and this has been a sticking point for me on. Other applications in the past about making sure we have utility acknowledgement and stuff before we go on. Basically give the, uh, ability to entitle this ground to go from the A two zone to the R. Our one fifteen zone, which is a huge change. Um. My first concern is that. Um. And my second concern is, is like I brought up in the pre-meeting. I wanna see the commitments. That was tied to Longhorn in relation to getting the issues within the Vaquero development satisfied. Tied to the, this development agreement as well. Um, them folks in Vaquero villages just keeps getting dangled along and dangled along and it's been. Probably a year or so, I feel now, even since we discussed it last up here and tied it to Longhorn, so. Unless someone else, I mean, and Pat, I'll bring you, or Mr. Burns, I'll bring it in a second, you can go and maybe give us an update, but. I don't know if things have been fixed or satisfied in, in relation to that and. Even to some drainage issues on Mr. Davis's ground that was brought up back then. Um, I, I wanna see those issues resolved. Prior to us continuing to entitle more ground to develop and, and that. Those folks in that subdivision still not being made whole to what, what was agreed upon. Um, as we went through the rezone process on Longhorn, so. Are legal, are we justified or to do that?
Yeah, you're within your rights on this as a legislative item, um, to either. Make the developer, uh, in the development agreement. Uh, required to complete the developments that you mentioned in Vaquero, or if you would rather. Not approve this reason at this time because he hasn't completed his contractual obligations in another development, you're well within your rights to do that as well.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anything else before we bring the app up?
Uh, ju- just uh, on the donation for the parks. Um, I, I think that they need to have a dollar amount in there if they can't come do an agreement on open space.
And so I suggested that we change um, number two or number three, just to add the language that says. Include park amenities, um, seventy-five hundred or equivalent for each dwelling unit. Um, or equivalent as mutually agreed upon.
Works for me.
Is that good?
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Burns?
Good evening, um, Pat Burns, uh, twenty-seven oh two North Burns Lane. And hello, guys. Um. Yeah, I can uh, address a couple of the, the questions, comments, um, as far as. Little Mountain Sewer, I actually do have a letter from them, but we ran into some legal issues as far as. We were trying to get a uh, an agreement with having two jurisdictions, who do we annex into? We were trying to get a uh an agreement with having two jurisdictions, who do we annex into which district, so we've got a. The attorneys have worked out a joint agreement and Little Mountain is just working through the legal stuff of how, because we have to annex into Central Weaver Sewer. And then we can allow Little Mountain to take over the lines, we just haven't legally been able to finish the structure. But I do have a letter here that says from the board. The process of establishing a pre- a procedure to allow the annexation into the sewer district, like and I thought we had sent this letter in, I apologize if we didn't. It's just saying, hey, we are working through it, we can work through the process, this is from uh the uh um. And the. Board and the uh L N S A, so I can I can get that to you guys if you want to apologize, I thought we had sent that in. Um. And as far as uh the stuff on the Carol, you're exactly right, Brandon, we've actually uh. Met on site with Felix Charlie. Um Tucker and Gary. And they walked the entire development and the engineer and walked the entire development. We uh presented all the options that the uh um community had brought to light. And we addressed everything, everything has been addressed and just waiting for the previous approval you guys did on. Longhorn, and now we're going to immediately start that probably within the next two weeks, Tucker's. Signing off on the agreements of the parks and how we're gonna, I mean, the uh. The uh trails and how we're going to do it, and they've already signed off how we're doing some of the drainage and some other stuff. But everything, everything that they'd asked for has been addressed and it is actually in the development agreement for the previous approved plan, but yeah, we were able to. Um, and they met with. One or two of the homeowners. I wasn't, I wasn't there, so I can't, I don't want to misspeak. But they got some of the uh questions, they they agreed what what was presented was was a good solution and. And we're okay with the solution, it works good for the community, I think it'll be good for, we're putting an eight foot park, eight or ten. They put pathway all the way connecting and then uh. The only thing that wasn't agreed upon yet was I had originally offered to put that flashing light for the crosswalk. Um, we're just waiting on engineering to decide how, what legally we can or can't do. And we'll whatever they tell us to do, we'll do that, that's the only thing that's not been addressed as far as for sure what we would or wouldn't do. Um, but again, this allows the most important and the biggest controversy was the. Gravity fed secondary water and now it'll be pressurized secondary water through the entire development, so that was probably the biggest. Problem and that will be fixed and we'll start on that. We got the uh Tucker signed off on the agreements on the designs for the secondary pond. We uh the culinary water, their engineers will sign off on it, and once they give us the sign off on it, we will go ahead and start uh. Designing and building that pond, so that was that was by far the biggest. Debacle of that subdivision, so um I hope that answers your question if I'm forgetting something.
Nope, that answered my question, I appreciate it, so.
Okay.
Anything else for? The app come on this item? Hey, anything for us?
Uh, no, I appreciate it, and um I'm actually glad you brought up the uh sewer with getting the uh. Um, we work with Black Pine all the time, so we know exactly where we're at, but getting a letter, that was a great idea, I didn't just didn't think that was good. A good way to cross eyes and dot T, so I appreciate that, we will get that done.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate the update on that, but I just like it. The same language that was referenced in the development agreement on Longhorn tied to this as well in relation to Vaquero, just so it all. It all ties together, I mean, essentially, in the end of the day, this is all one big project and.
I agree, though, it's one big project, but it's also being proposed as a separate project, so we should have all documentation for each project.
Yep. Anything else on this item? Okay. And I am ready from recommendation on how you guys see fit.
In your recommendation, you mentioned so a letter of acknowledgement from Little Mountain, are you concerned about any other letter of acknowledgements?
It it sounds like and and staff can verify that, I mean, it sounds like it's it's there, it's being worked through. I'm not as concerned, if if Mr. Burns wouldn't have presented that, I would feel I would recommend we table this item just. Because of not having it all, but I I mean, if if staff feels fine with moving forward with that, I I don't see an issue with it. Director Grover, do you have any concerns?
I think it'd be good to see that letter um and and just make sure and probably um visit with Stephanie um. In our community development now where she's over Little Mountain, just to make sure everything's okay. Um, and you could condition that um upon that before it goes to the commission if you felt comfortable.
Yeah, I'm fine with, I mean, given that there is a supposed, you know, and you know, if he's got the letter. I'm fine with seeing it go as a condition then of approval and not table on it then, so.
And that's the only Little Mountain's only one you're concerned about at this point, though.
Yeah, if if staff says we've got water.
Okay.
And the sewer would only would be the only other one. Um.
I will say that I am still leaning towards just because of the fact of the uh. The concerns with the previous um development that have been lingering for a very long period of time, I feel like it'd be fair. Considering tabling it um would be fair for the applicant to be able to accomplish some of those things that are, sounds like they're in process rather than actually completed at this point, right? It's it's pretty new on the agreement that and what's going to be done, so I'm not opposed to. A a positive motion, I'm just saying I would still consider tabling it for those reasons and with allowing for documentation.
And I I guess for our sake on that and and I mean. My only thoughts to that is is as long as it's a condition that that, you know, that it's built in there and. I mean, I'd even say leave it as a condition before it goes to county commission for approval on the rezone. But I I I just don't feel there's a reason. You know, as long as staff is on it, sounds like they're making some progress if they're reviewing plans and stuff. I don't feel it necessarily needs to come back to us, but the condition. Just for your comments, I would recommend we condition it on before it goes to county commission, if you're feeling that way, it's just my thoughts on that.
And I agree with that, especially where it's public notice or I have a public hearing, we're not have to have that restated again and I can agree with that.
And I I personally think just the way it's been stated in um Longhorn is okay to give them um. The, let's see. Before the Longhorn Estate subdivision plat is recorded, so it doesn't get held up.
Good point, yeah.
Um, with the county commission, you know, I think.
Yeah.
Might be good just. I think that's enough of a push, I'm hoping. If that you feel comfortable there.
My only thought is I would like to see it tied back to to this one as well, so.
Oh, yeah, the the same condition on this one that we have, sorry, being very clear, yeah, same condition that we put on Longhorn on this one, so.
Guys.
Everyone following?
Uncle Jeff. Mr. Davis, didn't you have a pipe that went through your corner?
Oh, sorry, I thought.
Do you know if that was, that challenge was solved? Or resolved?
Pat's like, I can ask.
I think, I mean.
Did you address that, Pat? I'm good with that.
Hey, sir. All right, well, if nothing else, ready for a recommendation?
Um. I move that we forward a positive recommendations to county commission for file number ZMA twenty twenty four dash zero eight, an application to rezone approximately sixty five acres of land. Located at approximately six, six hundred ninety one south, sixty seven hundred west. From the A two zone to the R one fifteen as illustrated in exhibit C in our packet tonight. Um, I do so with the staff recommendations in our packet with a few um adjustments. First, um on item number three, parks and open space and trails, item A will read land deeded to the park districts. Including park amenities. Um. Is seventy five hundred dollars per unit or uh equivalent as is mutually agreed upon. Between the developer and the park district. Donation for existing lots shall occur with the donation of all lots or units paid prior to the first plat being recorded. Um, I'd like to add a condition number seven that um. Subdivision improvements within the Vaquero Vaquero Village subdivision are complete or escrowed before the Longhorn, before the um. Mibis family um subdivision plot is recorded. And item number eight, um a letter of acknowledgement is received from Little Mountain. Um, I do this with the findings that are found in our packet.
Hey, I've got a motion, do I got a second?
Oh, second.
I motion second, any discussion on the motion?
One question, did we want to limit this to the zoning? The the amount of lots that are applicable or to the amount of lots that are on the layout?
I I think naturally they'll be limited to the zoning that we approved, they won't be able to go beyond it.
That's correct, right, Liam? Yeah. All right, nothing else, Mr. Clontz?
Hi.
Mr. Navel?
Hi.
Mr. Wickren?
Hi.
Mr. Faver? Mr. Andriotti?
Hi.
Mr. McCormick?
Hi.
Chair votes, I as well, that passes. All right, next item on our agenda. This. Uh, this is I another legislative item, this is going to be item one point two ZTA two zero two four dash zero five, this is going to be a public hearing and possible action on a request. To amend the residential zones and add an R one fifteen single family zone. And to amend the R three zone to create R three A and R three S zones to provide for multifamily attached zone and multifamily stack zone. To and to amend the site development standards for all one, two and three zones. And related clerical and administrative amendments, Director Grover.
Chair members of the commission, you'll be you'll be making a recommendation to the legislative body, the county commission on this, um you're basically changing. The land use code, um so as you do this, you can kind of keep that in mind, this is going to apply to all zones. Um, also, you'll open and close the public hearing, Mr. Your will be presenting.
Thank you, sir, Charlie.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm going to pull up a map um just so we can all see what we're looking at on the screen. I didn't anticipate having quite as many members of the public, I'm glad they're all here and I gotta tell you, public hearings uh from uh the Warren West Warren folks is always my favorites and always very respectful and. Um, not, I don't ever feel like there's an angry fist shake at. At us or at you guys like there is in in some other communities, so my appreciation to the community. Um. Let's see. I wanted to bring up the future um land use map uh on the screen, just so we can see what it is that we're looking at. What and where, I should say. Planning commissioners, I'm sure you know this, uh members of the public may not be as aware, so if you go to the planning division webpage and you click on this icon called general plans and related studies. In the lower valley, Western Weaver, this is the West Weaver General Plan, um we could pull that up and you could see all the maps and uh. You could pull up the the plan itself and read through the plan, but uh the map is kind of where the the meat and potatoes are, because it's what identifies the geography of the area that we're looking at. So as we look at. Yeah, the monitors are showing the wrong colors, now I gotta. I'm going to have to look at the screen rather than my screen.
It looks good on our screen.
You guys see yellow?
Uh huh, yeah.
Odd, all right, uh let me try and interpret for uh the public then.
The blue is basically yellow.
Yep, uh and that yellow area or the blue area on this map here uh is what the future land use map designates for. Uh, medium to large lot residential, the general plan talks about medium, large lot residential being um lots that have on average. Uh, a fifteen thousand square foot footprint, and when we're looking at street connectivity uh and looking at pathway connectivity and. Amenities provided by the developer, what it really boils down to is your gross acreage divided by fifteen thousand square feet. Um, so not every lot's going to be fifteen thousand square feet, you might actually see some pretty small lots in there, but everything averages out to be your gross uh divided by fifteen thousand square feet. So the general plan adopts the medium to large designation, but the code itself is the one that says the fifteen thousand square feet. So just making sure that's that's pretty clear to to everyone in the room, um and then as far as the. The color that is. Uh, little bit darker blue, can you?
That's what we need here, orange.
It's orange, well, I could see orange, but I can't tell on that map, uh it's a little hard to show, I wish I had a pointer, but. Um, west of, oh, you can see a little bit better over here, so you got a little bit darker blue on the south side of the railroad tracks and um west of the river, you got a little bit of purple and lighter purple in there too, so that darker blue is intended to be. Uh, mixed residential, the plan says mixed residential, it also says um mixed res, oh, thank you.
It's nice having a professor around, ain't it?
I know how to use it. There we go, okay, so. Uh, in in the plan itself, when we talk about mixed residential and we're talking about that color of blue right there, there's a little bit over along twelfth street as well. Um, mixed residential, the plan basically says um. We want to work with developers to create uh whatever the market demands in terms of housing, that's really where you're gonna um cut into the. Outstanding um housing attainability challenge that that we're having in the having in the area, so. Uh, the developers will come in and say, hey, this is what the market is asking for, maybe it's a uh. Single family attached, maybe it's condos, maybe it's townhomes, maybe it's uh multifamily, uh and so. That gives you a lot of flexibility in the general plan, it's supposed to be written that way, because it's supposed to be general, to think about a variety of different zones that you can apply to these properties that are. The darker blue, darker blue. Um. As far as the other colors like the purples uh and the darker purples, those are more kind of commercial or mixed use zones uh for the future. Um, so what we're talking about tonight doesn't apply to those, we're only talking about the residential zones, R one, R two and R three. Right now, your residential zones are breaking up, broken out into, or sorry, your R one zones are breaking out and broken out into three different sizes. R one stands for single family, the one is for single family, um and you've got fifteen thousand square foot, twelve thousand square foot and ten thousand square foot lot sizes. And it's the same calculation, your gross acreage divided by whatever that number is, that's how many lots you get. Or however, however many uh development units you can build there, and then the lot sizes are pretty flexible. Um, allowing the developer to get what they think they can capitalize on, but also, and more importantly, getting the community, the street connectivity, the pathway connectivity and the parks connections. Um, and built parks that um helps make a community um great. Uh. The loss of the rural heritage and and character of the community is is a challenging thing to to work through, but the general plan does tell us that. It's almost, uh, I tell people, uh, when I'm doing other kinds of presentations, I say, uh, in this area, when we were going through the general plan process, it was almost a. Gosh, you don't really want to grow, but if we have to, if this is what's going to happen, if this is where the pressure is going, we might as well shape it the right way. And so not that anyone's really excited to see the farms go away, but um when they do go away, because they will go away, whether it's now or through changes in the near future or politics that change things. Uh, long run, so long as people continue to have kids, the uh area is going to grow. Well, then, if we're going to lose that um agricultural heritage, how do we make sure we keep some semblance of community character and identity? Parks, recreation, street connections and trail connections was the emerging. Community character and identity? Parks, recreation, street connections and trail connections was the emerging theme that came out of that general plan process. I just want to kind of set that tone. So your R one zone is the um single family. Um then the R two is your two families. So those are like duplexes. Um and then your R three is multifamily. Right now, you only have one R three zone, and I think if I remember right, it was probably crafted in the fifties, nineteen fifty-eight. And you can tell by reading it that it was uh very much oriented towards a uh middle century development patterns. It's not oriented towards development patterns that are happening now or that the market is asking for. And so what is being proposed here is a split of the R three zone. Some regulations for R three A, A stands for attached, which is single family attached townhomes. Or R three S, S stands for stacked. Um and so you'll see kind of the height uh regulations and the um amount of space that uh a building can occupy on a lot. Reflected in those changes that you have in front of you. Um as far as stacked goes, uh R three S could allow buildings up to fifty feet. Um but uh that would be in a few and select limited cases. There's no specific thing in front of us right now as we're looking at this tonight. That would show us where R three S is, but the um potential or uh proposed developer of that darker blue there. And a little bit over into the lighter blue over here um is uh targeting certain pieces of property right there for R three S. If we create the R three S zone, um it wouldn't only be exclusive to that piece of property though. Um wherever else you guys choose to rezone to R three S could use that zone as well. And uh again, your general plan says. Right along the Twelfth Street corridor. In this area here, and there's a tiny bit over there out by eighty-three hundred to try and create a buffer between the more uh heavy industrial area. From the court uh between that and single family residential. So with that in mind, um for the last year and a half, two years, we've been approving uh development agreements left and right. Uh based on this concept of street connectivity and um average lot sizes, not not minimum lot sizes. Um and uh it seems to be working pretty well. In fact, I did a presentation the other day that um documented the amount of linear pathways. That uh pathway miles that we have um not just in the ground, but committed through development agreements. So when they come in and they submit their subdivision, um they've got to install those pathways and we're we're getting up there. Uh better than some other communities that have a lot more development. In fact, um the Western Weaver Pathways Plan. Uh which is a coordinated effort across several different jurisdictions um. Is in its, you know, final uh crafting and a lot of what the cities in Western Weaver deal with. Is retrofitting because they didn't plan for streets and pathways appropriately. This is the right time to do it. So with that in mind, promised I wouldn't say very much. Again, I didn't know that we did. We would have um a good crowd here, so um I just wanted to make sure everyone kind of heard. The evolution of where we are with the proposal that's in front of you. Um you have a chance to get through it a little bit in the pre uh the pre-meeting and we talked a lot about it in our last work session. Do you have any questions about what's in front of you?
Any questions for staff? Good job, Charlie.
Thanks.
All right, I'm ready if you guys aren't to open a public hearing on this item.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to open public hearing.
And a motion, we got a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, we're now on a public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak on the amendments to the R zones, um please come up and state your name and address and.
Roger Heslop, sixteen fifty-seven South, forty-seven hundred West. As I looked at. When we went through and developed the master plan. We were convinced that third acre lots were the thing that we wanted to look for. The thing we wanted to have because of size, because of keep up, because of a lot of. Things and we talked about the possibility of going down to quarter acre lots. With amenities added to the community. When I saw this, just so that everyone is aware. Your R three can be up to twenty-four units per acre. That's a far cry from the three that we talked about in the general plan. And a far cry from the four that we talked about as possible alternatives to. Incentivize to improve with the community. My concern is that when you start getting ten units per acre. When you start getting fourteen eight units per acre, which is what the R three dash A would amount to. And twenty-four units per stacked. Unit. We are not maintaining. A community that is going to have a lot of cohesiveness. When you look at the apartment buildings, when you look at the density that our neighboring cities are putting in. And you look at the quality of life. And you look at the quality of health and their standards. There's no place for the youth really to spend a lot of time, even though they are requiring some open space. And you're to be commended that you're looking at the parks and that. But when we start getting up into these upper densities. I see nothing in the code that says you're going to look to provide for the health. The social welfare, the social well-being of those people who are crowding into those kind of units. And when you talk to the Weaver County Sheriff's Department, the majority of their problems come from. Units that are stacked or units that are close together. We want a quality unit. We want quality community. My concern is if we open the door and you approve this for quote, a potential area. As I listened to the last discussion, there were at least three places places where this discussion tonight. Could be applied to what you just passed in the past because this now would become the code. And from past experience, you're going to have the developers coming back in asking for this because it's now passed. I would suggest that we. Not look at those higher densities for the benefit and the welfare of the community. Thank you.
Good evening. Name McFarland. Fifty-two oh two West, eleven fifty South. I've been a lot lifetime resident of. Our small community of West Weaver. Of which Mr. Heslop has part as well. I don't understand why. Our county seems to be transitioning from. The value of open space. The value of agriculture. To now shifting towards. How many homes we can pack in and stack in and so forth. It just doesn't make sense to me. I disagree with. Charlie respectfully. It's not. Guaranteed that agriculture is gonna disappear in our county. I hope and pray it doesn't disappear. I hope you folks don't want agriculture to disappear. Uh hopefully, you enjoy local produce and local vegetables and the things like that. And as Mr. Heslop just addressed, if you pass this a different type of zoning to pack and stack. It's gonna bring developers. Developers that don't live in our community. They don't really care about our community like we do. I'm a lifelong lifelong resident. My great, great, great grandfather was one of the first. Homesteaders, if you will, in West Weaver. The McFarland line goes back uh. I'm generation six. My son that's running our farm now, Kenny, is generation seven here in West River. We hope to continue our occupation. We hope to continue providing food and. Being able to joy enjoy the lifestyle and the open space, being able to see the mountains, being able to watch the foxes feast. So on and so forth. I think we need to quit. For some reason focusing on how we can pack and stack and go back to our thoughts of having. Open space and the beauties of the trees and the rivers. And the farm fields. The farm fields don't need to go away, but if you pass this. Uh suggestion on zoning changes, they're more likely to go away. Uh we need to be looking at things like conservation easements. That is a a very good alternative, which would allow us to sell our property rights, our our development rights. And maintain what we have forever for the community and our posterity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kenny McFarland, fifty-one oh two West, eleven fifty South. Um I have some questions. I didn't know exactly what was gonna go on in the meeting tonight, but is it all right that I do a question and answer at this moment? No? Okay. All right, let me think.
Ask your questions. We'll do the best to take notes and provide an answer.
Okay, after. Okay, all right, so. I guess last the questions that I'd answer and then maybe later do that, but um the question, if you could explain to someone that's simple. Exactly what what we're talking about tonight. If this changes the long-term usage of the general plan permanently, or if this is like. For a specific area or if this is the whole general plan. Um. Also, one of my big questions and big concerns with any changes and and frankly, just the way it is right now is um. I would say the lack of foresight of infrastructure for this area, you know, we. We have like legacy highway on the map there, but when I talk to UDOT people, they're saying, oh, it's thirty-four years out. And that might be extreme, I think, in in my opinion, but still, it's like if we change the zoning. Um like right now, then we're talking developers are ready to get going in the next couple of years and. UDOT is gonna be way behind. I live on Twelfth Street right there right now and we have our business there and. Um it's already pretty hectic um to pull in and out of that street and my kids catch the bus there and. Um you know, I'm not, I don't want to tell people what they can and can't do with their land, but I feel like as a commission, as a county, we need to be really careful that we have. Infrastructure in place that's gonna handle an inland port, industrial housing, high-density housing. Um. I feel like that's something that is kind of lacking unless I'm just not understanding what's what's coming. I think that. Um legacy highway needs to be pushed forward like ASAP, in my opinion. Um and I do have a conflict in interest. I own some ground on the east side of the river there, so I'll just be upfront about that like. You know, that would be great for me. And so I'm not necessarily like trying to hide behind the scenes like there's a reason that I want it there too. But just for the good of the county, I think it would be good to push that forward and get that going too. Um. And then my other question is, I think where we don't have an incorporation right at this moment, I mean, obviously, it's gonna come at some point. To where this will be a city is I'm wondering if the commission has any thoughts or if there's any thoughts where the town center would be for this area because it. Because like I can understand some high-density areas in particular areas wherever these town centers would be. With parks and city buildings and different things, but if they're kind of just sporadic all over the place, then it's. It would be hard for it one some point down the road to to actually make a community a a city out of that, so. I don't know if the commission has the authority to actually make that decision in these general plan changes, but. Uh as I look at the map, it's kind of sporadic and scattered and. You know, one one city would have a really hard time making sense of what that map looks like currently. So that would be my question and and my thought is let's let's make a hundred-year plan out of whatever changes we make and not just a. Five or ten-year plan because the economy is tough right now. We also infrastructure um. And my question and thought of what does this look like in a hundred years from now? And then also. The thought of like what what actually are we talking about tonight? If if that can, if that's like a long-term change to the whole general plan or not, so thank you.
Thanks. Comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm ready for a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
A motion, we got a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, we'll do our best. So Char- Charlie, help me kind of throw the explain this one. So. What what we're doing doesn't change the general plan itself. We still have all the same colors, all the same areas. The only thing that really, I I guess, changes to county code. To help implement the principles that are within the general plan, correct?
That's exactly right. You your general plan stays the same, no changes. Um the code refers to what the general plan tells us to do and does it.
So my next part of that is is the R three is currently in county code.
Yes, and I wanted to make sure that was very clear. I'm gonna pull this map up.
So there's some. While he's pulling this up, I'm gonna just kind of give my spill on it. The R three is there. The R three areas in and this is, I'm gonna put it in layman's terms. Kind of put it out there. The orange areas within the general plan are basically the areas. That would allow for that R three zone to come in, so it would have been, I apologize that we couldn't get the right colors up there for you. We could see them, but if you look at, go to the county's website, look at the general plan, those are three areas. Are already there within the general plan. Um those orange areas, I think it's multi-use, no. Mixed use residential, right?
Mixed residential, yep.
Mixed residential. The problem that that I guess. We face in the and my view of this is is we we have an R three code that's from nineteen fifty. And you know, we're talking seventy-five years old and and a lot of practices have changed both for the good and the bad. I'm gonna just put it out there, good and bad with it. What this is gonna do is help allow. Or if a developer comes in and wants to make a change or say has an area within the general plan that could go to that. That orange area or that that multi uh family um area, it it makes it easier on county staff and us. To say this is what the code allows. Um it just kind of redefine, is redefining a correct word, I guess.
Changing.
No.
Clarifying what it means in the R R density has not changed. We're changing the language specifying language to the code, but nothing changing on general plan as far as the density goes. So I think the first two comments, um it it's I guess the. The it's misleading. Can you read all of the zones that are coming in? None of these, sorry, none of these zones are coming in. They are a tool to be used in the law averaging method or in the areas where it's allowed in the general plan. And what I think is important to notice, um uh Kenny, I believe, our last applicant. Um he said, is this like a ten-year plan? This is our hundred-year plan. This this is a hundred-year plan and Charlie's done a great job. And when we when we allow for dense housing. And especially where we've specified that you can't. And especially where we've specified that you can't have the whole thing filled with dense housing. We're saying you need to have a certain average density and we came up with like um, Mr. Heslop said, we said we wanted for most of the general, most of this Western Weber area. It's gonna be three houses per acre. And so if we take these homes and create some regions where there's more density, that frees up more area to be left. Open and vacant, so really this. This code allows us to have more open space. Not less open space. And it also allows us to have better infrastructure because if our homes are aligned. In within the streets, we can get the amount of density that gets you dot. To put those roads through. We we can't do it. We can allow the density. You dot looks at our density and says, okay, now you get a road. So if but if we build one house per acre. All throughout Western Weber County, we don't get roads. We don't get the infrastructure we need because we never get the density. That builds it. We don't get grocery stores. We don't get the commercial properties that we need. And we end up with no open space because everyone has a house on every single acre of Western Weber County, so. I I know density sounds scary, but what we're trying to do is create open space. And also allow people to have a home. Sorry, my rant.
I know, I appreciate it because you explained it better than I did. I mean, I. That was the first thing when when we started working through this in a work session that I looked at that densities didn't change. It just helped define. How big of how much funding there gotta be and and a lot of stuff like that, so I appreciate that. Um. I agree with Kenny's comment as well, you know, I. I I I'm gonna put a lot of the credit on Charlie going through this, you know, I think a lot of infrastructure was looked at as part of this general plan. Um. The the one pitfall that we do have is we don't control you dot and and you dot looks at trip numbers. There they don't. I will say they do have a planning division and hopefully they're gonna start getting better to look to the future. For stuff like this and and to try and get. Corridors and you know, because I I don't think there's not a one of us. Up here, whether it's on the planning commission or on, you know, and and possibly the county commission that doesn't disagree that that these need to be here. You know, they're they're shown on our map that way. We're trying to preserve an area for them. But the problem is is we don't control when those get built. And. You dot looks at, you know, it it's all about traffic numbers. It's not about. You know. Because we see the growth coming and, you know, I I know Charlie and and planning staff meets. I think quarterly isn't it about you guys meet with you dot and and so that they, what's that?
We've been meeting more lately.
So so I mean, hopefully through that coordination with the state and some of that stuff. Hopefully they're seeing the need a little bit more than just those trip numbers to to push that. And then. Charlie, all of those little red dotted circles on the map, those as as we went through the general plan, sorry, you guys can't see it up there.
Dark blue dots?
Yeah, sure, that's too far away. The dash ones, those are kind of the town centers, correct? Me if I'm wrong, that was put into the general plan.
Correct.
So basically, I mean, for you guys sake, there's there's one kind of right there in the area forty seven hundred and and eleven fifty. There's one down about fifty five hundred west and and the river there. Thirty five hundred and twelfth street, and then there's another one, I believe that's what about seventy five hundred west and. Right there by the rail. Corridor somewhere right there, so.
Well, that's the point. They're right on the corridor for the possibility of future transit when the area does get that dense.
So I I mean, but that doesn't answer the question of and and I agree with you. If there was an incorporation, where's that town center exactly gonna be? You know, at at the sake, we look at it from a countywide. I mean, we're looking at a huge area out here, so we're trying to see where those. Those are in and what come from this is, you know, those areas were selected based on feedback. From the general plan process and and that's why they were put in the map that way. And I just want to finish off because. Mr. McFarlane Lane, to your comments, I agree one hundred percent. I would love to see agriculture stay in this community and. I mean, I I grew up farming. I still have family that farm in the area. But. The problem that we are running into is, you know. And and I. I mean, I I idolize Kenny for what he's been able to do and take the family farm and carry it on. Um, we don't have that a lot in our community anymore. A lot of the kids, I, you know, the as they grow up, they don't want to do that. They don't want to. Bust their butts all day long and work their butts off all summer and and hope they make a profit at the end of the day. And, you know, I I looked at. It within my own family and my wife's family right now, it gets to a point that. You know, families farm together for a long time and then his families grow. Sometimes things have to be separated and, you know, some. Want to retire or, you know, I I look at, I'm gonna put my father in law on the spot as we went through this process. You know, he wants to farm, he's gonna continue to farm for a while, but. I go to work every day and have a job that has a retirement. His retirement is either gonna be. Someone's gonna take over the farm and help him continue to bring in an income. Or his retirement's in that land and that's where I feel we have to battle a fine line here. Is because as much as I don't want to see the change come to the area to to where we grew up and and, uh, you know. Back on. My family side, I mean, they've been out here a long time as well. But. I gotta look to the property rights of the owners of the property and. I mean, I I wish we could have an easement come in similar to what they've done in the in the upper valley. And and purchased hundreds, if not thousands of acres, that's gonna leave it in that open space and and the ag area, but. We. There there hasn't been someone come to the table yet to do that, to to buy the property and and keep it in and in an easement. That's gonna stay that way forever. Right now, you know, I I look at. On the on the map here, we've got some of those dash lines and you're really not gonna see them on the map you guys are seeing, but. You know, that that was put in, there is an ag open ag easement that could be put in by the landowners. It's gonna put this into an. Into an ag kind of conservation easement, but that also can get withdrawn from those folks as well. And, you know, the the unfortunate part of that is that we do have a proposal on the table that's gonna take. A good chunk of that out of that ag easement because the owners have chose to do that. And it, you know, it it puts us. At at least myself in a hard spot because, you know, I don't want to see it go, but at the end of the day, if you own the property. And and you, you know, I you want to sell it to a developer and and he has the ability to come in and. Build something based on what the county code allows him, it puts us in a hard spot to tell him no, and almost in a legal spot that we can't tell them no. You know, just due to the property rights and stuff, so. I I. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll leave it at that.
It's and and there's another facet to the infrastructure. You know, we're we're talking about you dot in a pretty major corridor eventually. Through Western Weaver County. But we're also talking about sewer. Fortunately, our water districts. Have managed the areas pretty well, so we don't tend to run into too many issues with with our water, with our culinary water. We have ran into issues and specifically now those issues seem to be more in the Warren, West Warren, Reese area. Uh, the Taylor West Weaver areas kind of overcame that in 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 the regards to the requirements for the secondary water. But let's go to the sewer for a second. The only means that we have to get sewer in unfortunately are development. And to grow that sewer, you almost have to, you know, count on the development to put it in and recoup it back through the the property. Uh, cost or the exchange when that property is sold. And so, you know, one begets the next and um. As far as the land conservation for ag, that's a great thing. But it's not for every family. And so it's we're we're at this crossroads and we've been here for more than several years. It's just that it seems like. Last couple of years, it's really exponentially exploded. Um, with the amount of of growth and the uh restrictions that we have because of lack of infrastructure. You know, and and in in our world today, we all expect a little bit of instant gratification, but these are huge projects. This is a lot of land to cover with infrastructure. And it's all going to take time. And it's all going to take money. And again, it goes back to one thing gets the next and uh is unfortunate or fortunate, depending on how you look at it as that is because we have a multitude of. Of different uh perspectives with us tonight. That's just how how it works and through attrition. Family farming. Is unfortunately coming to to an end because of the fact that tracks of land. That are divided among families after five or six generations get so small that even if somebody wanted to stay and farm. Their brother or cousin or whoever the property is divided amongst. Wants their retirement. And so, you know, I've covered a lot of stuff that's already been said, but. Thanks for letting me uh put that out there to you and hopefully it helps. It's it's not a fun process. But it's one that we're in the middle of and we need to plan our way through this for the hundred years, the best way that we can. There's one thing that we can be sure of. That we're not short on, and that is people looking for housing and uh and having. Nice places for them to be able to live. Is essential. So, thank you.
Any other comments? I've worn my voice out.
I just want to clarify what we're looking at tonight. We've had a lot of. Comments, um. But tonight what we're um making a motion on is not adjusting the general plan. It's about the code that the general plan references, correct?
It's also not adjusting the zone map.
Yeah, the zones are not changing.
We're not designating any land as a new zone in this uh uh discussion right here. We're just setting up the standards for what could happen if we ever did designate land to one of those different zones. That's all, just like we've got, we've got our two and our three zones. We have them right now. We don't use them. Um, they may, maybe they stay on the books for a long time. Maybe they don't. Maybe we get a really good development proposal that moves along too. But. We're not actually changing the way it affects the land yet.
Charlie, one comment I'd like to make uh is that um. Part of this code. Is looking at the architecture and the design standards, and so we get quality development. Um, when it does happen and if it does happen, right now, if they come in and do it, we're gonna get some. Maybe half hazard, um, uh, abbreviating that.
Hamas, yes.
Yeah, um, type type of type of um development. And so we're putting standards in place that we're gonna have quality units come into the areas so that. Um, when we do have certain areas where we do need a little bit more density um in mixed use areas, we get that. And so we're not ending up with um stuff that doesn't enhance the community.
Still a lot of unanswered questions when it comes down to what properties are gonna get these zones and the infrastructure that's gonna serve those zones, but. I I could promise you this, I won't recommend approval of a rezone unless I know where the infrastructure is coming from and how it's gonna get there. And I would hope that you guys wouldn't recommend to the county commissioners or rezon without knowing that our commission as well.
And I I think, you know, for the public that's been here. You know, through the meeting, it it's something that we do take. A. Take to. A good look at is as they, you know, bring these proposals through. You know, there's certain requirements that that developers do have to bring in in regards to infrastructure and and that's where, you know, the county staff does a does a great job on. Looking at, you know, whether road connectivity and how that relates to the general plan, utilities, how all that's gonna tie together. Um, you know, I wear a. In a in my profession, utilities there and so I I really want to see good quality utility and how it ties together and. You know, the the west of the or excuse me, yeah, west of the river, we don't have a lot of good utilities out there, but. The development should drive it, you know. The, the. Pro. Promontory commerce area. You know, they're they're proposing to bring a a thirty inch sewer line. Um, to the west as well as a a large lift station to try and get some of, you know, to. Put some infrastructure out in that area and then as. As we see these couple, you know, whether it's the subdivision we looked at tonight or that other rezone. That developer's got to put a lot of infrastructure in to get it there. That's that's on their backs to to make that work. Not on the residents are out here now or or uh. Um, you know, a tax base. That's gotta pay onto that, so.
Mr. Chairman, I I gave this presentation to some of my colleagues, um, a couple of last week. And I wanted to show you guys a a pretty. Interesting illustration of exactly what we're talking about. I like to talk about the pathways because that's my, one of my favorite parts of planning, that and the parks. And so um, how does the infrastructure get there through these rezones and through these development agreements? Uh, the yellow lines that you see on the map right now is exist. Sorry, the teal lines excluding the highways who've. Yeah, that's matches the highway. So the teal lines you see in the middle of the farm area um out west, those are um existing sidewalks and existing subdivisions. Those yellow, okay, the yellow lines, that is the amount of.
They are for blue.
Yeah, sorry. The yellow, blue lines, uh, though that's the amount of pathways we have committed through rezones and development agreements. The red lines are the amount of pathways that are currently in process through development review. We're talking about miles upon miles of pathways. And so we'll be talking about the same thing with with streets. We'll be talking about the same thing with parks. Every single developer of land needs to pull their weight. And through the rezone process, we're asking them to pull more than their weight. We're asking them to pull the existing communities weight as well because they're impacting. The existing communities way of life, and so more parks, more trails, better street connections, better infrastructure. Oh, and one more. General plan says that's how many pathways we should have, so we'll see what if we can get there in the in a hundred years from now.
Thank you, Charlie. All right, anything else on this item? Any more questions for staff? Liam, you got something for us? Thought you had some wise wisdom to bring to the table. Okay, with that, then if there isn't any further discussion, I'm ready for a recommendation on this item.
Chair, I'll make a res uh. One of those. Make a motion to approve positive recommendation. The changes to the ordinance. As are spelled out in our staff report tonight to the. Weaver County Commission.
Had a motion, do I got a second on that motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner McCormick.
Hi, thank you. I thought you still asked me for discuss.
No, no, sorry. Commissioner Andyotti.
Hi.
Commissioner Favero.
Hi.
Commissioner Wickern.
Hi.
Commissioner Novell.
Hi.
Commissioner Clance.
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well, that passes positive recommendation. All right, now on to our next item on the agenda. This is gonna be item number two, public comments for items not on tonight's agenda. Anybody wishes to speak? Make a comment for items not on our agenda tonight. Now's time.
Well, I will before they leave. This is usually when everybody departs, so I just want to say thanks. Everybody that showed up. It's good. Show up to these meetings. We sit in an awful lot of them with no one in front of us. So, thank you.
And I'll echo that. Please keep an eye on the agenda because they're on the notices that come out because there are a lot of proposals. Out in this western part of the county that's, you know, I I can think of two offhand that are, you know, two thousand acre plus that's kind of working through this. Through the process, so keep an eye on what's coming on because. It uh. We we appreciate the input, so sometimes it feels like. You guys. Stand up there and speak and and it's like it goes on block that that we're not hearing it, but sometimes we're bound by the code and by the laws that. As long as these proposals follow what's in the in the. Codes that we we have to. Put a recommendation on it to approve it, but you know, these as the rezones come through, it does give us the ability to add extra conditions on them. So, please uh. Please, we want, we'd like to see the public here, so. What up, Mr. McFarlane, if you got a comment?
I need to state my name and address again.
Unfortunately.
Lane McFarland fifty two oh two west eleven fifty south. Um. It has been referenced a little bit about the western corridor highway, um. I would like to, and you guys say that, you know, you don't have any control over you dot, obviously, but I think. You probably could have some encouragement. The county commission could have some encouragement, the commissioners. So forth. I I strongly feel like that road needs to stay where it's currently mapped. What is that about sixty three hundred west roughly? Uh, your your inland port. These new developments that you're addressing tonight. The growth that's gonna take place out there. All of that. All of that property, all of the, you know, the Marriott property, the, the inland ports, so on and so forth. You want that highway. Where the people are gonna be, where the jobs are gonna be, where the traffic is gonna be. I'm concerned about these two new subdivisions that were proposed tonight because. Eleven fifty south that I live on is already ridiculous. And it's just gonna get worse and worse and worse. But if they, if we can keep that highway out where all of this development is gonna take place. You know, that's gonna be a great benefit for those of us that live east of that area. Um, so. I don't know if you can answer a question or not, uh maybe you guys have some pull a little bit. And I, I wanna get personally more involved with the UDOT meetings and so forth. You mentioned you're meeting more often now than you used to be. Is there, is it true that they're rumoring the possibility of moving it back east towards fifty-one hundred west? Can anybody answer that?
So, right now we're meeting with them about once a month um to try to move things along. But what we're trying to get to is a feasibility study. Um and that's gonna determine more where that's going to land because of wetlands and issues like that. Um that was an issue that they ran into when they were doing the Davis Corridor. Um and so that's the first step we're trying to get to right now so that. We can see where that feasibility study would lay things out. So that's, that's step number one, and that's what we're trying to move along.
I hope feasibility study involves where the jobs are gonna be and the traffic is gonna be. And it's gonna be west of the Weaver River.
So, that's what we're, we're encouraging them.
So do all in your power, whoever has power to, to, to encourage UDOT. To please keep it west. I, it could even be further west in my opinion, but it's gotta be west of the river.
Yeah.
And then also, the earlier proposal of, of the zoning changes that you just adopted. We was talking fifty feet, the, the stack. Could somebody just explain that a little better to us? Are we talking multi-level? Apartments and so forth?
There, there are places that will have that, but it will be very particular places. We, we wouldn't allow that in. Just anywhere and. Mostly I'd say, what is it, planned in large planned developments where they've mixed the, the housing types. And um made sure it really fits in and. The, the standards that we passed, I think will really help blend the different types of buildings together. Make sure that they're architecturally attractive, but we don't, we don't foresee a lot. I, I don't know, we haven't had a lot of areas where we're even allowed to put that kind of housing in currently.
The orange area on the general plan.
Yeah.
So the dark blue that Charlie was, went by a lake.
Where some, but it would not be filled with.
Yeah.
I wouldn't approve anything filled with high-rise. It's kind of for special needs and, in certain areas where it fits in.
That's just a new concept to some of us old timers. So be wise with it. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to echo Mr. McFarland's comments and. The whole legacy in West Davis Corridor to this point's been funded by the state. It hasn't had federal dollars tied to it, so. You guys, reach out to your legislature legislators in your areas and stuff because that's where. They're the ones that are giving that funding to UDOT to, whether it's to do feasibility studies or, you know. Put funding to purchase corridor preservation, all that type of stuff. So the, the, the state legislature has a huge part in that. And, and even the acceleration of projects as well comes from how they appropriate funding to the state, so. That's a big part of that. All right, little bit non-traditional comment session, but any other public comments? No, it's all good. All right, remarks from planning commissioners.
Um. Have a quick one. Hopefully, kind of springboarding off of what you all said earlier. It's, it's been a common theme that I've heard from a few neighbors when I'm at my kids' ball games. And even on our community pages where I hear the county, including us, your community members, don't care about what we want. Our, our voice is not heard. They do what they want anyways. For me, that's very disheartening because I know working with all these um individuals on, by monthly, like very often. I see the passion that we have and the concern we have for our community and the rigor that we put into every one of these proposals that comes through. You can ask any one of these developers. I, I don't boast about, I don't say this in a boastful way, but we don't make it easy for them. I mean, Pat walks out of here with his head down more than he walks out proud, I guess. Sorry, Pat Tejas is an example, but like we, we beat on him pretty hard because we, we very. We, we high, we hold it in high regards that this is our community and we do care about it. And we do want it to, to be planned in, in a correct way. We, none of us are excited for the change either. That, I mean, I'm speaking for all of us, but just from. The, the comments I've heard throughout the two years I've been on here, we're not excited for the change either. We're not pushing for development by any means at all. But as they said, there are legal things that we have to, so we are here because we want to see it in a positive way. And we want to help shape that community in, in the right direction, so.
Thank you for that. Anything else?
That McFarland corn is the best corn in the nation.
I would second that for sure.
I, I might just have a short comment here. Um over in our neighboring community, Plain City. Uh it went through growth and the growth got to the point where, gosh, Kent's wanted to come there. And I'm pretty close with a lot of Plain City people and it's like, we don't want that blankety-blank store. We don't need it. I wouldn't even go in there. Well, to this day, I've seen every person that didn't want that say, man, I'm glad it's here. So with this kind of development, we're gonna get some things that'll make life easier for us. And I think that that's a pretty big deal over in Plain City now. And I don't even know how much money that thing pumps into the community there, so. It's not all negative. It's just we're used to looking out and seeing what we look at. And I'd just like to e- echo that uh from what's been said up here about. You all spending the time to come here because you have to sit a long time sometimes to get three minutes. But those three minutes are very valuable, not only to you, you but us. So, thank you.
Thanks, commissioners for the comments. Director Grover.
Uh just a reminder, you guys are required to get your required training in and you have some opportunities coming up in October. The Utah APA Conference is October tenth and eleventh, so if you can make it. We'd love to uh register you and, and get you down to not my favorite area in the state, but you know, I. But anyway, well, this.
Lot better when it was up here.
I'm glad you said that.
I, I'll just leave it at that. I. I'm an Aggie boy, but um and then we're also having the Utah Land Institute Conference. And that is in October as well. And it's a half day on the twenty-second and a full day on the twenty-third. Um and just for your information on there too, we're gonna have a panel on there. Um where we're the first in the state to actually have moderate income housing um in the state. Governor Cox will be there and he'll be on the panel as well, so.
Where's that gonna be at?
That's in Sandy um at the, the Realtor building there. Um so.
We have some staff members in, in myself on that panel as well, so it'd be a good one to get the rest of the group there, so.
Yeah.
Do these planners not know that October is like prime hunting season?
Exactly.
Giving up those days for that.
I, I'm not gonna go there because I totally agree. So anyway, that's all I have. Thank you and appreciate all your work.
Thanks, Director Grover. Wise words of wisdom from Liam. Friend. One of these days. One of these days. Thanks for being here, Liam, and keeping us in line. Okay, with that, um we're gonna adjourn to a work, our work session item. But we're gonna go back into, into the chambers back there. Please feel free to join us back there. There's some. We'll be around the table, but there's some seating behind us there that uh we can go through this work session.
We're gonna go ahead and get started with the work session item. Um. Sorry, I put my paper away. Now you're putting my reading device on. So that's gonna be a work session regarding the just application to reason part of the property located on southeast corner forty-seven hundred west. Eleven fifty south for the R three zone. Charlie, you're up.
Thanks. Um so just, uh applications just in its initial phases. Uh I wanted to make sure we got the applicant in front of you guys. Um the proposal's a little different than what's in the general plan, so uh wanted to make sure we had a conversation on the front end. Um before we got in a little bit uh deeper into the, the details of it. So with that in mind, we've got Randy and Cameron. Um uh Smith from.
Fieldstone.
Fieldstone, thank you. I was gonna say with a different develop your competitor. Uh so turns time over then to give you their presentation.
Thank you. Uh I need to apologize. I'm part of the problem. I grew up in one house with my six siblings and we didn't take eight houses. These are.
We all are.
Yeah, right. Um it's tough, but kudos. That was probably the best planning commission meeting I have ever sat through. And I said three hours, which means that was like, yeah, that was, that was really good.
But this is the best planning commission that you'll ever meet and I'm not saying that because they're here.
There you go. We, we actually. Guys know like way more than almost any planning commission knows. Like, seriously, I, I can't even, I don't even know how to tell you, but well done. Um. And the other thing I need to apologize about is I'm, I am a greenyard developer. I tear down trees, I name roads after them, all the bad things. But seriously, we wanted to have a work session. We have some ideas. We know they don't align exactly with the general plan and that's why we wanna do this work session. And maybe this is just dead in the water. And then that's what it is, right? Um but, but we wanted to talk through it, so let me see here. I got a presentation to pull up. Uh, share me sweet. Assume stuff, it's. Okay. So, um we're with Philsome Homes. Philsome Homes has been in business, I think we're going on, on forty years. And I think forty thousand homes. Um. The Utah portion of Philsome Homes has been going since, I think, nineteen ninety-six. And we built about six thousand homes in Utah and we're basically a purely Utah company now. We're headquartered here. We all are buildings here with one exception, Victor Idaho. Um because we like to go fishing, so we built some homes up there so we can go fishing. Um beautiful area, right? So we, all our work is in Utah and we've closed, we had operations in, in California and in Texas. Those have all been closed. And, and we are local business. Um I guess we're not an Ivory or a deer horn. We're not nationally traded. We're not Richmond. We're not being thought out by Japanese companies. Apparently that's what's going on between with Richmond and Woodside and these others, but. We are, we're a local group. Uh and we build the whole gamut of homes from townhomes to duplexes to starter homes. Uh up through million dollar plus homes. Um. But our bread and butter really is, is trying to get to the first time home buyer, which is really hard to get to these days. So. That's a little bit about Philstone. And please, like, if you have questions, comments, just interrupt me. Like, we're happy, we're happy to, to address those. Um so the property that we wanted to talk about today is on twelve fifty slash eleven fifty, right where it kind of turns north and gets trapped. Um or traps that property between the railroad and, and the Utah road there. Um and. That, everyone's familiar with the piece. It's by, there's a fruit stand on the corner, I think, and a gas station on the other corner and. Um, I think some of the comments tonight, it was. Zero farm, it's like key corners of this, right?
We're using that.
Oh, you're using the food. Okay, okay. So, so yeah, this is the property. Um. We've had a lot of discussion on future land use maps. See, it isn't actually blue, it's yellow. So we, I threw aside that. Um and as we look. So, I don't have like a laser pointer or anything, but. Right, properties right in here, shown in pink, and which is the vehicle oriented. Commercial zone, okay? Um so I think you guys are familiar with that. Um what I didn't put in was an actual zoning map, but this is zoned C one currently for neighborhood commercial. Um so your smaller commercial uses, that's its current, current zoning. Um and I guess used by right, it, it was to go ahead like that. Um. Former to, I've been at Philstone for about six years, but, but I'm a civil engineer, so again, I get to apologize about that too. I'm an extrovert though, so I look in your feed when I talk to you instead of mine. Um, an extroverted civil engineer is the trouble. Um prior to that, so I did mostly commercial development. I worked for Home Depot in six states, for Walmart in eight states, Les Schwab all over the place. I've done Wendy's, Zaxby's, Culvers, one of my favorites. Um so I've done a lot of commercial development. Um and as we look at commercial, so I wanna look at this property and, and see if commercial is the highest and best use. And get, and then get the planning commission's opinion on what you guys think. So the three main things for commercial is, you know, accessibility, visibility and customers, shoppers, right? So to run through these real quick, um this is the street regulation plan. Um. You guys can't see my mouse, huh? Um let me see.
If you move it really fast.
Oh, you can. There it is, right? So there's our, there's our property. Usually there is a laser pointer option, right, isn't there?
I don't think.
You seem to know this better than I do.
Usually doesn't show. There we.
There you go.
Hey, I got a laser pointer. Yeah, so I mean, I got a little, a little teeny red dot up there. You might be able to see it. This appears. There's a one on the screen though. So, so that's the property they're writing and um it, there's, there's a plan for a road at forty-five hundred south, I think, or west, I mean. Uh.
Yeah. How you grew up in this town? Don't know the roads? Come on, man.
It's one that doesn't.
Actually.
It's one that doesn't exist yet.
So I'm guessing on what it's going to be.
It would, it would be forty-five.
Yeah, I see, and I guess right.
We're just trying to get you familiar with.
Yeah, yeah, let me have it, right? So I did move out, I did move out of Utah County. If that makes you guys feel better. I don't live in Utah County anymore. I left Lee High. I made it to Harriman, but I haven't made it very far yet. Um, all right, so this plan calls for that, for that forty-five hundred, you know, connectivity. Um so. This property is particularly uh access constrained. It's got UDOT roads on two sides. On the west side. Uh not a hundred percent, but I understand the plan is an overpass over the, over the railroad at some point. That's probably gonna block all access on the west side of um the property over here. Um. And then even this access where this is the principal arterial road for UDOT. Their, their intersection spacing for a principal arterial is half a mile in urban areas. That intersection is about a quarter mile from forty-seven hundred west, which is currently planned to be a signalized intersection, I think, pretty soon, actually.
Power company in there, we get their stuff done.
Good luck with that. You deal with that on every project. Um so. Based on intersection spacing, like that can't even be a full motion access into this property. So this isn't really access constrained property, which again, makes it hard for commercial. Um right in, right out accesses can be spaced six hundred, eight hundred feet, right? So, so those kind of things can come through and. And UDOT gives those out a little easier, but, but not always, right? Um visibility, this is a tough side. If you're coming, if you're headed to the west, the curve in the road, the first few. Retail or commercial uses are gonna block the view of the ones behind until you're on top of them. Sure, that, that can be solved with signage and, and some different things, but your convenient uses really want good visibility. Coming the other direction, you're kind of blocking. The, coming from the west to the east, it kind of blocks the others. So, so visibility can be tough. Um I think those are both overcomeable, maybe the smaller things, customers, rooftops, right? So I just took this picture. We've got this commercial and this sea of customers living nearby, right? Um so typically with the commercial user, they look at their one, three, five radius, one mile, three mile, five mile. What's the demographic? How many people? All those things, right? So looking at this site, here's our one, three, five circles. And you see that even at the five mile circle, you're getting past I fifteen and, and over into Ogden. Um and you can also see, there's a lot of farmland in there. Should keep it that way, Mr. Brown, yeah? So there's, there's a lot of farmland, right? Um not, not so many. It's not full of residential yet, so. This could, this can be a viable commercial property, just not very. This could, this can be a viable commercial property, just not very soon, right, um. I dropped in the, um, general plan, I guess, to, to the future land use map, so you kind of see again those circles and what's planned for that area. The yellow being the low to medium sized residential and, uh. I don't really have a lot to say about that, just something to look at if, if you guys have questions. Um, so, so moving over, so say I put that one, three, five over there at the intersection of I fifteen and twelve, right, which is, which is core, there's already. Commercial there and it's growing, and as the residential grows, it's gonna support that, so. To me, I would worry a little bit about cannibalism, right? Like what businesses are here, what are there, and which way are people going to get to them? So that depends a lot on the business, um. So I wanted to show you guys those one, three, fives, um. We, with our application, um, sent in a, a couple of residential concepts. Uh, we've talked actually with the, the commissioners about these a little bit as well, um, one of them was townhomes. And the other one was, um. Smaller lot, single family detached, these are like forty five hundred square foot lot, um. I'm still kind of, uh, learning your guys' um, form based code, right? So this isn't really actually applying that, this is just kind of using the standard R three, single family home. Uh, which allows it to go down to a thirty five hundred square foot lot, but the setbacks ba- basically make that unbuildable, so forty five hundred is about as small as it can go to have. Have a buildable area to build a house. So that's what these are, not to say this is what we're gonna do, these are just discussion points, um. And, and then we had saved the corner, there's a little bit more than an acre on the corner, um. To potentially be commercial. Or maybe not, I don't know, I, I really do feel like residential could be the highest and best use for this constrained piece, the north side of the road. I think is different than that, um, I think, I mean, you still have the U dot access concerns, but you have more access from the west and, and, um. And more space to build that, that town center, that core. If, if the, uh, light rail is coming through there, it's pretty typical to have the residential close to the light rail, but typical to have much more dense than this even, um. So these were a couple of concepts, the single family showed like a hundred and twenty six units. And the townhomes shows, what is it, a hundred? Two hundred and eleven units, some front load, some rear load, um, so. I'm nearly to the end of these slides, so I'll, I'll just show you a couple more things and then, and then we can talk about this and, and get your opinion, um. So Fieldstone. We build, these are, um, so samples of single family homes that we build, um, like the bottom right is being built in Lehigh on like an eight thousand square foot lot, um. The bottom middle, that's either, that's either from Clearfield or Payson, um, we have some daybreak in the bottom left and top right, and we have Leighton right up here in the top left. Um, those are forty four hundred square foot lots on that Leighton one on the top left, a rear load, single family detached product, extremely popular, sold very fast. Um, that was, that was a cool product, um. We build townhomes, we've got Lehigh, we've got Eagle Mountain, we've got Searchville. The fancy one at the bottom is out by Park City. I'll let you guys guess, what do you think a townhome, that townhome in Park City costs?
One more night to the board.
One point five.
No, not that bad, but eight hundred, about, for, for a townhome, it's ridiculous.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, so I say Park City, it's actually not in Park City, it's, 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 it's by the Kimball Junction.
That's the four side of town.
So I should have been clear, that's my fault, I set you up, right? We also, um, I will say dabble in apartments, okay, so this is. This is the copper eighty seven project in West Jordan, two hundred and forty units on about six acres, about forty units per acre. This one has some structured parking in it, this has a lot of things, this is not one that we build. But we can design and entitle and we get different GCs, because this is a different level of construction than what a home builder typically does, but. If it's, if higher density is the play. That's something that we could be interested in, we have the partners to do it, if, if you guys think so. Have I talked enough? He's just like, yes, yes. Um, no, I mean, welcome to feedback, you know, and the ideas you have, I guess I've got some ideas too, but I'll, I'll wait, I'll let you guys. Okay, I'll let you guys talk and, and ask any questions and let me know, I mean, what you think, are, are we just barking up the wrong tree on this, or? What do you guys think?
It's a hard sell for me. It's a very hard sell for me. I mean, we, I'm gonna put some history to this ground. When I first joined this commission years ago. Is when we went through the whole change, even changed this ground to commercial, and there was an extreme uproar in the community. To even move this ground into a commercial zone and. In my opinion on this, and, and you know, get a little bit of history. In, in my. Work life that. This intersection, you know, is, is a prime intersection, in my opinion, it's not gonna be today, but for commercial. And, you know.
It has the traffic, commercial loves traffic.
I don't see it being a huge access concern, in my opinion, um, in my professional life now working for U dot. I see things come through that, you know, there, there would be some controlled intersections and some stuff like that, but. That would be required through it, but. You know, Mr. Andriotti made a good comment in our last one, in our, you know, in that meeting before we moved over here. I was very involved with the Kents process when it, when it came to Plain City, I was their public work director at the time and, and. I heard every one of them comments, never gonna shop there, it's the worst thing in the community, and, and I seen exactly that, that happens, you know, you go in there and. The, that group that used to meet at the Maverick, moved their meeting from the Maverick to Kents. To sit around the table and, and enjoy stuff there, and, and they were all the ones that didn't want in the community, and the city fought it really hard and. I, I, you, you've probably been involved in a heck of a lot more than I had, but, you know, when, when Bill Wally negotiated. Size and everything else with the city as that came through. Even associated said, don't build a store that big, you're not gonna make it work and. They build it to the size they wanted and, and they filled every bit of it and it's probably one of the best Kents. That they have out there, you know, I think Roy still tops them, but, you know, the, the growth comes, they were a little bit of ahead of it, but they had a foresight. To see that and, you know, it, it was a learning curve for the, for the city and everybody involved, but it's, it turned out to be a great project and. And that's where I'm at with this, this intersection here. You know, I, it, it kind of right now, Country Corner is the, is the town. Center of the, of the community, I mean, it's, it's the only gas station slash if you need buns or you forgot this or that. I haven't been in there since the ownership changed, or since the new leases come in there, but that's at least what it used to be. Denise had about everything in there that you needed, but, you know, you didn't have to run to Plain City to cancer, Roy to Whinerger's and, and shop at.
You're talking about the, the gas station right here?
Yes, that, that's the gas station across the street that sits there right now.
Yeah.
The. I, and I'll get strung up to making this comment, but this is my honest and personal feelings for this area. I want to see more commercial and in trade for more commercial, more in line with that intersection. You get up in the, in the harder part, as I would say, to develop or build the commercial up in that teardrop kind of point. I would rather, I, I would support some higher density in that area if the commercial area was reserved, because I, I mean. An acre or a one point two acres or so, what that is, a commercial, in my opinion, on that rendering, there is a waste. You look across the street at Country Corner and you gotta have, you know. A, a couple acres and, not that I want to see a Maverick come out into our area, because Mavericks taking over the world and we don't need another Maverick on three intersections here.
How are we gonna have adventures?
I'm not a Maverick, they sold the station, it's by my house.
I'm not in favor of a Maverick, we don't need another Maverick. I would take a holiday, I do like holidays.
I know the holiday oil, guys.
I do.
Looks to me. Brent, I don't care if it's Maverick or whatever, but you know the, the one that they just put up on the east side of the freeway in, in Far West?
Lederbell?
Yeah, that's a perfect place for it right there.
Okay.
It's, it's the same curve in the road, it's, this, the speed limit on this road is going to change, it's going to have to change.
Yeah.
There's absolutely. You put a nice anchor store here of some kind and, and to go back to the Plain City thing, that one's so successful over there that the adjacent buildings are full and the pads are, are filling up. So I kind of see the same thing here with, with possibly something in this odd area. But this is an odd piece of ground, you know, glad that you, you know, wanted to come and show us what you're showing, but I don't see this as residential. I see it's more as a commercial spot.
So, um, question, the bridge that'll go over the railroad right there, right?
Uh, yeah, and I guess it's potential bridge, it's, I don't, it's, it's not planned, it's, it's just.
But there's no crossing right now.
Yeah, there, that's forty seven hundred west, that's the main.
And you have to wait for the train, they might, but if they put a bridge, how far would that approach? Like, can you have access off the forty seven hundred to this area? You'll never have access.
You'll be too close to this.
I talked to one of our traffic engineers today. On that exact spot and, and to get the twenty two and a half foot clearance, you have to have for a bridge on over UPR's right away.
That was older, twenty three, four inches.
Twenty two five is what, what they told me today, I don't. But to get that, to be able to come up and down, that intersection would never work, so you dang near fly over both and come back around.
I just measured the ramp on nineteen hundred west, uh, from the Atgrade intersection, not Midland, but the next one to the, the south. From there to the railroad track, and that was nine hundred feet, the distance from twelfth street to the railroad track here is five hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
And so that would be a very steep.
Yeah, this is about.
Might miss the intersection entirely.
Yeah, you would, what, what the trafficking, what our traffic engineer said today, if they ever proposed a bridge, what he would see, you would fly.
Over.
Over both.
Over both.
And, and it would come back around.
Okay, it, so my concern with residential is. You're right by the road and the railroad tracks, I mean, that is noise. It's gonna be a hard sell, I, I just don't.
I love that you don't want to stick your high density in the worst area, because every, if you're the city's like, yeah, damn it right there, so I appreciate that.
I, just working, so I work as a civil engineer and there's, yeah, one of those.
I don't do, I don't do time cards anymore.
I do this, and anyway, yeah, you, you build next to railroad and then all the residents complain and then you're trying to fill out. All sorts of paperwork to fix it and it's never gonna be fixed. I know why people buy houses by the railroad that they don't want to live in.
I think we've done a pretty good job of sticking to our general plan and, and I just. On this one, and, and we've made adjustments where, where it's been warranted and makes sense. And this one, it doesn't make sense to me to, to change that drastically for that, for that area to be resident.
That used to be.
I think that, you know, and being raised out there my whole life is, is that little intersection there is the center. Of the world for us out west there. And my vision of that really isn't the, the homes, it's like little, uh, strip malls sometime. You know, the, the friends people there that live around.
Would you consider the base level commercial and apartments above, is that something you'd consider?
I could probably think that.
I mean, like the mixed resident, what's it, the mixed residential instead of the mixed commercial?
Well, that's, that's about as far as I could be.
Then you can get the rooftops to go for the commercial.
Yeah, so form based zone would support, would support that, so street facing, um, commercial. Uh, at, at the ground level and then you could build multifam above and behind.
It would, it would at least lift the residential that you're not right at that street level where the cars are and right where the train is and.
You're still gonna hear the train, I hear.
You're gonna hear it, you're gonna hear it visually, it won't be quite so bad.
And you put the train in a box culvert of some sort.
And you want to put out there departments on. You guys are all complaining about hitting everything else. You know? No, I have lived there all my whole life, thirty eight years. I mean, it's just like living at Hillfield. They don't hear the jacks. I hear your bark and dog, I'm not here.
When I lived in, when I lived in Castle Rock, Colorado, I had a tracks behind my house and people would visit me and they're like, oh, you have a train? I'm like, we have a train? It's like, yeah, I just got used to it, even though they blew their horn even, because it was an intersection, I mean, I was half a block away, a block away.
But they can brought the convenience of the commercial with the residential, that, that would be the type of residence, I mean, if you're, you know, a little family sleeping kid, it's one thing. Bring it up and maybe, I don't know.
But I see that in the future. That kind of development there, when there's a rail line, a neither passenger rail line that runs out through there, and you can make that all kind of integrated together and make it. Like it used to be, there used to be a whistle stop just up the tracks from that. And, and so you really, it has a lot of potential in regard to that. For residential and commercial, I could almost see that as far as straight residential, I.
Well, the funny thing is, is like, I, I mean, I know a lot of women that hasn't listed, right? I don't know that it needs to be residential either. But like when you talk about the main road and then the railroad tracks, like you look at Midland and nineteen hundred, like where those apartments are in those. That's what you've got, is the tracks on one side and you've got busy Midland on the other.
Lots of.
And lots of.
And they're filled, so.
It's filled, I mean, so it was. Always goes or someone not living there.
You're right.
Can't say that those aren't filled up.
That's true, and I think on my house, on thirty five hundred, it's, just, it's probably louder than a train going.
Okay, I take it back, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, there are those areas that that's where it's at and people still move there, yeah.
It is a different kind of concept, I mean, the train tracks have been there for longer, most of us in this room's been, you know, here and. It's not like, it's not like the, the home. The homes are change, is what the changes.
Right.
You're gonna move into the area, you're gonna know, you're gonna have a train in the backyard, that's your choice to buy. Well, I mean, it's different when you build a freeway. That was planned forever behind these residents and now they don't like it.
True.
But it's, it's, in my eyes, it's the same. It's there, they're gonna see it.
But it would be nice to have commercial in that area and even, and if you put the residential in, even if the commercial, there isn't enough density to support it quite yet. Then at least you have the residential aspect.
Or like, I do like, or maybe on one side you could do that, I don't know about them, I don't know about that, but, but maybe.
This is what I drew on here was this two hundred and fifty feet and five hundred feet. Sorry, I'm drawing with the mouse, but, um, so, so a typical drive through restaurant, your Chick-fil-A, your, um, your, your pad user. They fit on about a two hundred and fifty foot down, maybe down to two hundred sometimes, but in that range, and that's about half of this site, um. And Cameron and I, so we're both Smiths, not related, I don't know how it happened, but, um. So we were talking about inherent, I have, uh, well, just like this, they have the pads out front and I know the pads, it's the O'Reilly's and. But then I'm like, I have no idea what's in the strip mall behind, it's, and we stopped and looked and there's a karate store and a dance studio and a few things, right? Um, so that kind of thing does fit, right? Strip mall with pads out front. Um, but another option, what if there are commercial pads out front? And residential behind, you get your visibility, you got your shoppers, is that a concept that could work? I, I throw that out, I mean vertically, vertical mixed uses, like, everyone's excited about it and loves it, execution is really hard. Um, unless you're sticking to your mom and pop shops, your, you know, dentist, not even a dentist, like a lawyer's little office space or something. That you can't do. Coffee shops and bakeries. Peppings and smells and deliveries and trash and that's all like, yeah. Life theory.
Nobody makes money.
Yeah. Yeah, vertically mixed uses just struggles, but, um, but adoption.
My whole, I mean, it's, it's. If we don't preserve the areas for commercial. When the growth comes, it's not gonna come because it's not gonna have the traffic and, and the prime spots, this was a big. When, when that rezone come over in that corner of West Haven, that was my concern with that one as well. It's not that I didn't want to see the houses, it's just if we don't preserve these prime commercial spots. And, you know, it, it kind of. Goes back on what I say about landowners have rights and, you know, if, if the landlord wants to sell it and, and this is what the buyer wants to buy. It has the process to go through the code, you know, go through the process and, and I think that's what we're working through here, but in, in my opinion, both. You know, as a community member sitting on this commission and, you know, being a part of when this general plan was created and the. In, community input that come from that and everything else, it's just. It, it's not what was wanted in this area and, and rightfully, it's not what should be out there, so.
Can I build on that just a little bit? It's commercial now and if some. Entity come in there and said, this fits for me, we've got it. We've sat over here and tussled over changing. We've sat over here and tussled over changing a zone to something that took so long that they moved somewhere else. And I think that's why we need to make sure we preserve these areas because we don't know when that person's gonna drive up and say. That will work.
Friend, um.
Wayne, isn't all four corners commercial?
Yes.
The Adios and Rousey's?
Yeah.
The store's already commercial and so is is.
The only.
Our side.
The only corners that are commercial is this side and the um Gibson's. The previous general plan did show Costesso and Rousey as future commercial, but they hadn't rezoned to commercial yet.
They didn't rezon to it when we went through the whole process of this.
We changed the general plan for all four corners, but it was only this property that was changed.
How many of us are old enough to think back of Clinton, eighteen hundred north, two thousand west? I remember an old fellow on an open cab tractor mowing the grass on all four of those corners. But it hasn't been that many years ago, thirty years, forty years. We've got to preserve that, those four corners, not not for something quite that impactful. But for the little shops, I I wanna be able to stop and grab a slice of pizza or an ice cream cone or. And maybe get my car washed or possibly another gas station. But it it, this, if we put this out to a boat of the West River residents. That that little town pub should serve in the future. It would obviously be the the commercial aspect, not housing. You know, this development is better suited for West Haven or Roy or something like. We're not incorporated yet, but someday might be hopefully. But that's our, that's our hub and and it should be able to be what the residents would want. And it's not this.
Well, this is why we're here talking about it with you.
It's a tough sale.
For me, fair enough. And I I think it is important to consider, like. We're looking at this, at a piece of this commercial, of this large commercial area. And a very constrained piece, so we're not asking like, hey, we want to dig, let's get rid of all this commercial. We are, we are asking, we want to do residential because we're filled stone homes, not filled some commercial, right? I do have some commercial land, anybody want to buy any commercial land in Eagle Mountain? We cannot upload that stuff. And we don't develop it, so. So, yeah, it is a piece, but I hear you guys and um and and your commissioners are telling me. That they probably wouldn't consider it unless it was a unanimous planning question, so I need all of them, so this. Um but but I'm hearing you, so any other feedback? And we're getting late, I know.
About you, Charlie.
When it, when it comes to the general plan, that's not really my opinion that matters. I mean, I'll give you guys good planning principles, but.
Well, give us some principles.
It's gonna sound non-committal, but uh it's mostly because it's not my community. Uh rooftops are important, you're not gonna get a commercial that you want to have out there unless you get the rooftops. Look at uh West Haven, West Haven really wants uh that Walmart to come in on that Walmart site. Walmart says we can't make a pencil, there's not enough people in that area within the the one uh five and or one three and five feet and miles. However, once it goes residential, the. This is actually kind of a sad statistic, but uh the average lifespan of a commercial building in the US is thirty years. The average lifespan of a residential building in the US is is more than a hundred. So um we've got uh the chances of this ever going back to commercials very slim. Unless, of course, you got wants to build a freeway, then, you know, they they have a machine that eats houses and spits out asphalt.
Oh, they're worth the developers.
I'm I'm a little uh, you know, that's a little under my skin right now, not that it's their fault, it's really their fault, but.
For me, looking at the general plan, I came onto their commission when we were kind of finishing up the general plan. And this was the area that was seemed to be the focus at that time. And knowing what the the vision, what what I understood the vision to be, I guess, back then. I I see houses coming, not right now, but houses coming in that general area pretty soon or possibly pretty soon. I really feel like commercial, and that is the center point of what my feelings and what our commercial or I thought is for. It's the only commercial they've had for forever, right? So it it just kind of seems to fit that way.
Besides Davis Meeks. The only other chunk that ran that was out there.
My my guess is you're gonna have a hard time getting like a a grocery store on to fit on this property. Uh if you look at the Smiths at the Mount of Ogden Canyon, the depth of that is. A little over, I think it was six hundred feet, where this is closer to five fifty or whatever. You look at the um intersection of twelfth street and uh. Washington and the complex that had Shopko and Vasa Fitness and that, um the the depth of that is over twelve hundred feet. Um and where this was only.
Want to own the pads out front and they ground lease it, right? So the big anchors, your Home Depots, your Lowe's, your your Smiths.
I don't disagree, but look at what they're building in Mountain Green right now. What's Lee's building in Mountain Green right now? How big is that site?
I haven't been there, I don't know.
I actually just seen the building for the first time yesterday that they're putting up. But it's not a huge site, it's not a huge store. It's similar to the store that they're building in that they just opened in Richmond. And, you know, that's something I envision here, and we're not gonna get a a Home Depot or something in this exact location.
My wife would like to see a Costco personally.
I worked with Costco on one project and it was.
No, it's like the one that they built in Richmond, up in Cashmere.
I haven't seen that one. I'm just looking at different grocery store sites uh around the area.
So it is might be the use that we need there, Charlie, is what you're suggesting. Is it, but it's not big enough for a manager.
I I'm suggesting options for uh a potential future. Uh it'd be hard to get a grocery store in here, I think, so I I just pulled a line on Lee's, yeah, on twenty seven hundred north. From the back of their property to McDonald's up on the front, that's uh eleven hundred seventy four feet. That's that's a pretty small grocery store site. Um so grocery store's gonna have to be on one of the other corners if if a grocery store's gonna fit here. Um but with that said, what could fit here? Drive through restaurants might be, it might be a good spot for drive through restaurants. Um I'm not a huge fan of the twelfth street corridor, but I think Ogden City's doing better with the strip twelfth street corridor here. Um in town than um uh Riverdale is doing with Riverdale Road. As much as they're still trying on Riverdale to make it better, I think Ogden City's done something as as good as they can with a highway running right to the. So. Once you put houses, the houses aren't going away, but what other commercial options do you have? Maybe you got these other little options. But again, those little options aren't gonna come in unless you have a commercial anchor or a lot of rooftops to serve the neighborhood.
So how many years are we away from putting commercial in this spot?
Well, on this specific site, let's just say you approve a lot of rooftops. That starts to incentivize, I'm not saying this is a good idea, I'm just saying if you put a lot of rooftops on a specific site. That starts to incentivize uh retail operators start looking at the other corners really hard. And um I don't know a whole lot of smallish land uses, other than some good drive through restaurants perhaps, that you could fit on this. Then it it may be a great option. I do think that. Planning on this intersection being commercial for the long term was a good idea. I think it still is a good idea. Um we just need to make sure our expectations of what will happen and the timing of when it will happen. Um are pretty well set. We're gonna see empty fields there for a little while until you get more rooftops there.
I mean, when we shop, so we on a Culvers as well.
Do you really?
I thought you did.
I didn't know that.
It is really, you need and it's. A a ridiculous amount of density to even do a small, and Culvers is kind of a big operation. We we couldn't get the numbers to work anywhere in South Ogden, like South Ogden next to the mountain because you lose your density. Um you know, those circles that he's talking about, you lose your density when you're next to the the mountain because you've got the the bigger lots. Even where we are in Layton, I mean, you're, you have to be full the entire day to to turn a profit and so. I I just don't think in the next thirty years even someone's gonna take a risk on that commercial property. And so I I I'm not saying don't. Commercial, but but. That, and I guess that's why I say, okay, put the, put's commercial on the bottom and put some apar- apartments on top. Cause then you instantly get the two to support each other, maybe support a small gym, maybe support a small something underneath. Um so we can keep some commercial there. And apartments, I think, have a shorter life cycle than single family homes. I don't know, I but you guys live out there, so I think you know the best, but. At the same time, I, it's, it takes a long time to get big commercial to invest in those areas.
Uh yeah, I don't see big commercial being able to even bet on there.
Well, I think when you say big commercial, you mean like corporate commercial, like not not like big in space, but even a Culvers, which is.
Can't get it clear.
Sorry.
Uh I worked on that project.
It's small, yeah, it's gonna have to be really small.
Vertical mixed use, like first floor commercial. Uh are are you thinking that that's coming in as commercial today, or are you thinking that that first floor is residential for a while, but it's built to a commercial standard? And ready to support that when it comes in, like a live workspace?
Not on this, so we've done that on a pro- on a project just to the north here in the form base area. But I still don't see that fitting in this area.
I don't see that fitting twelfth street.
Busy road. Yeah, that's the one thing that, I mean, honestly, that's, I feel like that's maybe the downside to residential. So access constraint a lot of things, but it is on a very busy road.
Eleven fifty for the lease up in. And that doesn't include the commercial sites that are adjacent to the uh highway.
All I know is if we. I know for certain, if you put anything high rise or even close to more than just a couple of levels there. The community is gonna be in an uproar and they're gonna hate him because of that, I'm against it. Doesn't bother me, but I know the community, we're not gonna like that.
I'm really not an advocate for building rentals. I want to build owner occupied space.
More like thirty five.
Everyone will tell you to take a drive through West Haven and then come and ask them if you really want it. There's those tight spaces in West Haven on those corners where they've done that.
I don't think it's time to give up the commercial yet, that's where I think.
Sorry, I know it's not what you want to hear, I just thought, thinking about.
Don't apologize, some, no, you're fine. Let me, let me show you this. Because we're talking about it and this, I'm I'm a developer, this is interesting to me, so let me share. So this is the development I was telling you about in Inherments. This is about five hundred feet deep, so strip mall in the back. Pad users on the front. Um the strip mall in the back is underperforming, right? It's it's destination style, I I didn't even know what was back there. But that's the kind of thing that fits. I do agree that you're twenty, thirty years though before. I mean, unless unless something changes and houses all of a sudden become affordable and and land goes down and, which that's not gonna happen, like. It's it's a tough, tough market. So just an example, like, but this is about five hundred foot depth. Pad users up front, we have, we have a little uh like a Beto's and an O'Reilly's and uh. The salty pineapple, my daughter loves that place. Salty pineapple. So just just a, yeah, a sample.
Better be careful of that.
Yeah, yeah. So what I'm hearing, I guess to recap, we really want to hang on to the commercial and not not really even a mix. Of commercial, like developing a portion of the property as residential, get some rooftops in. Um you guys are not on board with that.
I'm not, I, there's a lot of area that would support the R three along this corridor and stuff like that. That, you know, obviously willing buyer, willing seller.
Yeah.
To buy the property through there, but I would rather see. That area that the general plan shows to go to that prior to us ever giving up a a a prime. Anchor point, I get it's little, but it's still an anchor point and kind of a community hub.
What if I propose we change the general plan to add a bunch more of these?
You can do whatever you would would like, that's you're right. Where where it goes?
Yeah.
I I I I don't know, so.
Yeah, for sure. No, I appreciate, appreciate the feedback. Um we are passionate about building homes, we're bashing about owner occupied, I don't really want to build rentals, we we do.
We don't want rentals out there either.
That's, that's not the goal, I don't think.
All we want is a bunch of Airbnb's right there, how about that?
That's actually probably the best place for Airbnb, you're not disrupting your actual.
There's a reason why we don't have that down here, it's up there.
Um I just found another bridge that goes over the railroad. In Clearfield, off of Main Street, it's the newer bridge, I don't know if you guys have seen that, it looks like it shoots straight up into the air. Um that is five hundred and fifty feet away from the intersection, so it's technically possible. But I don't know how high the um railroad grade is compared to what's around it. I'd have to go out and look.
You gotta, the thing on that one is is you're sloping to the west there. In that area, so you're a little bit higher here, I think that took the, where we're flat.
Okay, yeah, maybe perhaps, so the railroad might actually be lower right there. And then on the other side, when it comes back down, that ramp is a lot longer, that's about a thousand feet on the other side.
Do they ever look at going under?
Here, um.
Happens, it's harder, because it's an active rail.
We had discussions over today just regarding the drainage and the issues at the Morgan ones, one over the pumps and stuff, because that's the lowest point, it goes down there. If the pumps aren't working, then the road floods, so.
Uh it's no ideas off the table, though. Um Commissioner Harvey the other day said, well, what if we just do an elevated rail? Now, I don't know if he was completely serious about it.
The 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 best cure for that intersection is to move eleven fifty over to about. And and boat around the river and bring it straight west down along the, but along the canal. And get it moved over and then take it on the west side of forty seven and go down through whomever property it is and boat back over to the to. To where eleven fifty is now.
Yeah.
World War Three.
Process of widening this right now, we're in design on right now.
Oh, no, eleven fifty.
From the River Bridge to forty seven hundred. Just from this intersection, you're proposing on up to the River Bridge.
The first, yeah, so the river loops around like this, so from nineteen hundred, you cross that first crossing, that's where they're gonna.
Go back to the map. But they're, they're moving the road closer to the railroad tracks.
Are they planning on putting up?
But I keep saying, this is the dumbest thing, fifty million, that waste of fifty million dollars, let's straight the damn road.
So I mentioned to them, put a little bit of buffer between the lanes, if you gotta go rumble strips, rumble strips or even a jerk uh barrier. Use the difference for. That would be a key critical pathway to go with, I said, for who? There's a bunch of farm field right there, I said, you don't know what's about to happen.
Fine, so, all right, anybody, anybody got anything else on this? Okay, here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. I can't call you by name, you lost your name. Thanks, yeah, thank you guys so much.
We haven't invoiced your application yet, and so you let me know what you wanna do, if you want us to invoice, so I can keep patient for what we can or.